I will call to order the town council meeting. Roll call first.
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Beckman.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Here.
Mayor Ravazio.
Here.
If you join me, the salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first, we have open time for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda, and I ask if you can limit your time to three minutes. Is there anybody who'd like to speak at open time? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to our first presentation on townwide staffing. And actually, Peter, I'm going to turn it over to you first. I know you had something you wanted to say, and then we'll have you do the presentation, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor Ravazio, members of the council. Peter Brown, your Public Works Director. I'm sitting in tonight for Todd Cusamano, your town manager. He's unable to make the meeting tonight. He had a minor family medical emergency, but he sends his best, and he told me he's confident that your staff will do just fine in his absence. So the first item, the first presentation item, is on townwide staffing. The title of the presentation is "The Evolution of the Town's Organizational Structure and Staffing."
I'm sorry, I missed one item. I'm going to go back.
Item one more.
Reporting out of the closed session meeting of December 4th, there is nothing to report from that meeting. Thank you. Sorry about that. Appreciate it. And just so everybody knows, I left my reading glasses at home, so this will be an interesting meeting. No, I'm okay. It's more fun this way.
The next item is number 11.
I'm just going to go from memory.
Let's stick with item three, a presentation on townwide staffing and the evolution of the town's organizational structure. I think, just for a few introductory remarks, what we're doing at this point, I know your town manager's been here a couple of years, and we're really beginning to do kind of a wholesale assessment of how the town has been organized, what type of departments we've had, what the functions, roles, and responsibilities of each of those departments and members therein are. And so I think perhaps for the first time that we know of, we're taking a look back at about the last 20 years through this presentation, and we wanted to kind of give you a snapshot of...
Somebody heard you.
Excuse me?
Amazing. Somebody's watching on TV.
...of how the town has evolved in terms of, you know, organizational structure and staffing. And so our hope is that in this 20-year look back, it gives you all a good understanding of how we've been functioning and what we've been doing. And then at the very end, there may be a few comments from Planning and Public Works on current staff needs, just as a heads up. But for the most part, this presentation was put together by Lorena, our administrative analyst, who's going to carry us through the presentation here momentarily, and Todd Cusamano. And we got almost all of this information, the basis of it, from our financial system, annual reports, and budget. So most of this came, you're all familiar with George Warman, a lot of this is what we pulled from his, you know, very well-kept historical records. And so there'll be more to it, and we're looking forward to your comments and questions, but I'll turn it over to Lorena to walk us through how things have gone over the past couple of decades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So the presentation is basically divided into three sections. We have the organizational charts, and each chart has an explanation of the changes in staff within each department. Then we have a breakdown of staff within those departments, and then a breakdown of the contracted staffing costs. And as you all know, organizational charts show the structure of an agency, and in government, we mostly all, government agencies have a vertical type of structure that shows a few people at the top, and then more people in the middle, and then a whole bunch of people at the bottom. So that's kind of what you'll see here. And if you look at that, that's an example of what an organizational chart would look like, but that actually includes all of the staff positions that existed in the year ending in 1999. So you have the department heads underneath, the town manager and town attorney, who's underneath the town council, and we all know the town council is elected by the public. So throughout the presentation, you'll notice we have a lot of different titles, but overall the expectations are the same. And as Peter mentioned, we went back 20 years, and Todd wanted to kind of get an idea of how everything was set up before, and we figured going a little bit beyond 10 years would give us a better picture. So we went back and, as Peter mentioned, looked at all of the information that George had, and we did research on the year ending in 99, and then skipped ahead to the year ending in 2009, and then the years ending in 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and till today. So I'm just going to explain kind of, for the year ending 99, we had the administration department with two full-time and two part-time positions. Then finance had three full-time and two part-time. Public Works had 17 full-time positions. Planning and Building, seven full-time. Parks and Recreation, three full-time, two part-time. And then we had Fire with 19 full-time and one part-time. And then the Police, which was the Twin Cities Police Authority, they had 44 positions, 33 were sworn, and 11 were miscellaneous. Okay, so here we have the year ending in 2009, and I'm only going to mention a few of the significant changes in some of the departments, just kind of the ones that we thought were a little bit more important. So there won't be details on each one for every single fiscal year. So in the year ending 2009, the Finance Department actually contracted two individuals, and that's because the Finance Department was already handling a lot of personnel matters in addition to IT-related matters. So the contracted individuals they hired were a personnel analyst and an IT consultant. Then we had, in the Public Works Department, they went from having 17 full-time positions to 14, 17, sorry, in the year ending in 1999, and then 14. And they contracted a professional land surveyor. And then for Planning and Building, we have, we had a department head that actually went from being the department, the Director of Environmental Services, to the Director of Planning/Assistant Town Manager. And then that's just the explanation of what I just said, and a few more details on other departments. So here we have the year ending 2014. And one of the significant things that popped out at us was that in the Public Works Department, the department actually added a Director of Field Maintenance and Operations. So they had two directors in that department. And then the Planning and Building Department, the department head went from being the Director of Planning/Assistant Town Manager to the Director of Planning and Building, and that title has stayed consistent, and Adam holds it to this day. And Adam Wolfe, sorry. And then for our Fire Department, they added a contracted individual called a Continuous Quality Improvement Nurse, or CQI nurse. And then for the Police Department, it actually went from being the Twin Cities Police Authority, emerged with the San Anselmo Police Department, and became what we know today as Central Marin Police Authority through a JPA or Joint Powers Agreement. And they, the merge led to 45 sworn positions and 13 miscellaneous, a total of 58. And that is the structure for the year ending in 2015. So for that year, in the Public Works Department, the department's Director of Public Works/ Sanitary District Number Two, sorry, is it that one? No, I went a little too far. Sorry about that. Okay, there we go. So the Director for the Public Works Department left the town in April of 2015. So in order to save costs for additional staff, the town manager during that time was actually serving as the Director of Public Works/SD2. And then that same year for CMPA, they moved the dispatch supervisor and eight dispatchers to the Marin County OES, and this saved approximately $500,000 annually. So that cut some of the miscellaneous staff that they had. Then here, in the year ending 2016, for Public Works again, the town manager continued serving as a Director of Public Works/SD2. And then for Planning and Building, they actually hired a building inspector through a contract. And then in year, in the year ending in 2017, the Public Works Department, so that was a year that we actually hired a town manager, who's Todd Cusamano, and the department's Director of Public Works/SD2 position became the, and this is a long title, Director of Public Works/Town Engineer/Assistant to the Town Manager. And then that same year, the Planning and Building Department, in late May, added a Code Enforcement Inspector as a contracted individual to assist the department. Okay, and then in the year ending in 2018, the Administration Department hired a full-time customer service representative, then...
I'm going to show them what you're looking at.
Yeah. Oh. I figured it was easier for you guys to look at the charts, but what I'm reading is on there. The Finance Department added a full-time Director of Finance position, and during that time, we had two directors in that same department, because George Warman was still working for the town. The Public Works Department, their Director of Public Works/Town Engineer/Assistant to the Town Manager position was eliminated because David Bracken retired. So then we had the position of Director of Public Works/District Manager for Sanitary District Number Two, and that's currently held by Peter Brown. And then that year was when our professional land surveyor, who was a contractor, retired. And as Peter informed me earlier, that was the year that the town council approved an opening for a full-time employee who could cover the work that the professional land surveyor was doing. But it wasn't until the following fiscal year when someone was actually hired, and that person became the Associate Civil Engineer, who's Fernanda Stefanic. So this is the current structure of the town, and I already mentioned the changes for Public In the Finance Department, the Personnel Analyst, who was a contracted individual, she retired, and then George Warman also retired, so it went back to having one department head. And then in the Planning and Building Department, the Associate Planner position was vacated in early September, and so the position was eliminated, and then a secondary senior planner position was opened and then filled. And for Parks and Recreation, they eliminated their facilities worker position, and to cover that, the work that was being done by that person, the department actually currently receives assistance from one of the maintenance workers from our Department of Public Works. But one of the biggest changes was in the Fire Department. They merged with the City of Larkspur and the Kenfield Fire Protection District through a JPA and became the Central Marin Fire Authority. And you can see the different positions that are in Central Marin for that department. And then for CMPA, there's currently an open position for a Human Resources Consultant through a shared contract where the individual would assist the town of Corder Madera and the city of Larkspur. And that's kind of it for the explanation, so I know that was a lot. And this presentation will be put on the website for everyone to see. This is just a summary of the staff totals per department, and then at the bottom, the total of staff, including contracted staff, for the whole town. So you can see the different numbers. And then I included some breakdowns per department for the years that we looked at. So this is for the Administration Department. We have the green, full-time employees, the blue are part-time, and then you'll see some yellow in the departments that had contracted employees. That's the breakdown for the Finance Department. We have Public Works, Planning and Building, Parks and Recreation, Fire Department, and then that big jump already explained from the JPA, and then the Police Authority. And then for this slide, I will let my colleagues take over.
Okay, thank you, Lorena. And just for the mayor and the members of the council, there will not be a test, so we won't ask you what change happened between '09 and fiscal year 13, so you're good. But we will post this on the website, and we can go over any questions you may have here in a few minutes. But I wanted to take a few moments just to hone in on Public Works. I know Adam might want to do the same for Planning and Building, but if I go back to, say, for example, just a few things to cover here on the total staffing. So these numbers are a little small, but if you just look at, say, for example, Planning and Building or Public Works, if we look at the total staffing of 17, 15, 14, 13, and we're back up to 15 now, this is a relatively stable number of Public Works employees carrying, for the most part, a similar workload. But the last slide that we're going to look at, the one that Lorena ended on, tells a little different story, so I'm just going to kind of hone in on what that looks like for the Public Works Department. Again, we'll see the same thing here in bar format, where we had 17 employees in fiscal year 99, and we're closer to 14 now in fiscal year 19. But if we look at what we've done in terms of how much money we spend on Public Works maintenance contracts, that number has changed quite a bit. And so with around 17 staff members, we had, we were spending a small amount of money, relatively speaking, in Public Works maintenance contracts. However, when we went down to that, like, 14 number, we ended up, we, the town of Corder Madera, ended up spending a lot more money on contracting out. A lot of this money went to our landscaping, maintenance, medians, a lot of town park work. A lot of that was contracted out. And what's happened in the past year or two is, you know, we've staffed up one position or so in Public Works maintenance, but we're really trying to do a lot more of this work in-house for less money. We don't, we don't feel the need, and we want to, of course, be responsible with the taxpayers' money. So that's something I think that's noteworthy for you all to understand, is certainly during Todd's tenure and during mine, we've made an attempt to really rein in those costs and at the same time do our best to perform the same town services with in-house staff. So that's somewhat of a positive story for us. The other thing I'll touch on before I turn it over to Adam is, in last fiscal year, fiscal year 18, we felt the need in the Public Works Department, and you all concurred, I'll remind you, that our workload was really high in terms of capital project delivery. Our engineering needs was strong, and so with your approval, I believe it was in May of this year, we added one full-time equivalent on the engineering side. At that time, we didn't know that we were losing a contract staff member. So what ended up happening essentially was Mr. Keen retired, our land surveyor who was working, providing a lot of services, and we added a full-time equivalent, and that ended up being a swap. So we lost a contract employee, and we added a full-time equivalent. But in the end, that person that we added ended up taking over that job. And so we didn't really, in my opinion, certainly, add the extra person, because when we added it, it was prior to knowledge of that pending retirement. And so I will be likely at a future council meeting telling you a similar story in terms of our needs in that needed FTE. And I know Mr. Kuhnhart might have a question, which I'm happy to answer, so maybe I'll do that. And on the Public Works side, or in general, I know Todd could have done a great job of explaining the Fire and Police consolidation. Many of you are very familiar with that story. The one thing I'll say about that is, when you look at the total employees, you kind of see a jump in, say, for example, Police going up from 44 to 58. Well, that includes a Police Department that's shared with three jurisdictions, so it's actually closer to a third of those are assigned to the town of Corder Madera. However, all of the management, financial, budgeting responsibilities of those departments is still contained within. And so I'm seeing some questions, and I'm happy to take any that you might have before we go over to Planning and Building.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Well, one thing with the total summary staffing, could you add another line where you adjust for what our share of the Police Department is? You know, Fire Department...
For both JPAs?
Yeah, we can do that.
You know, the Fire Department didn't go up by, what is it, 21?
True.
21 headcount, in reality.
Yeah. So to your point, Councilmember Andrews, while these are not all assigned purely to the town of Corder Madera, we can depict that in a little more clearly before we put it on the website. But what Todd's point was, when it comes to, say, for example, putting together our budget, or, you know, his role as a manager of those, there's still a lot of work, and a lot goes into that, but you're right, these are not FTEs assigned solely to the town of Corder Madera. Okay. Others?
Questions?
In the Public Works area, I think it was noted the change from two directors to one director. I didn't notice much of a change financially. Were the functions reorganized and ultimately the, let's say, the scope of work remaining the same, or...
There was a change financially, and I can, maybe I can go into it a little bit here. So when we eliminated that position, we also, let's see, where are we going to? Public Works?
I thought it was more recent. I thought it was between either the top two or the second and third.
Yeah. It's because we've added maintenance staff, and so I think, you know, losing a director and adding a couple of maintenance staff is probably a net zero change.
Okay.
In terms of total costs.
Okay. And so the staffing has increased, but the dollars haven't increased.
Correct.
Cool.
I just want to add something. The numbers that you're looking at there are only for contracted staff. So the two directors that you're talking about, neither of them were contracted. So none of that information includes, like, salaries or expenses for anything related to employees who are not contracted.
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you. Good clarification.
I do have questions, but maybe we can hear Adam, and then we'll...
Okay. Sure.
Adam Wolfe, Director of Planning and Building. I'm going to be pretty brief here. I just wanted to touch on a couple of aspects of our department, and with respect to some of the things that you'll note in the presentation, and I think you'll note we're back to sort of, in terms of the number of folks in our department, back where we were, I guess, in '98, '99. We have added, as noted here, sort of a part-time building inspector, and also a full-time code enforcement slash building inspector, who's also now taken on some responsibilities with respect to some Public Works code enforcement, specifically as it relates to sort of the construction activities and building permits, erosion control, and things like that. Part of that, the reason for that, is really just the increase, I think it's a pretty dramatic increase in the number of building permits. I don't have data at the moment. I will, in the future, sort of get the data as best I can for going back 20 years, but at least going back 10 years, we were, 2010, I know is a little bit of a slower time, but 2011, '12, we were on 480 permits issued a year. We started ramping up in '13 and '14 into the 500s, 550, 570, around 550 in both those years. In 2015 and '16, we were more in the 600 range, and now we're in the 700 range. So it's, that's on the building permit side, so all of those, not all of those obviously have planning entitlements associated with them, but obviously that's a tremendous amount of building activity, which also requires, as you know, inspections for all of those. We do, on some of the larger projects, we do have sort of a dedicated, we will contract with a dedicated building inspector who will just focus, for example, on the RH project or the RH project, and a couple of other larger projects in town. So those are, they're not coming out of, those are actually timing materials, so it's paid for by the developer in those cases. But nonetheless, it's quite a bit of construction activity, which also, as you imagine, and I think this is actually more steady, whether you have really high amounts of building activity or not, the code enforcement element is something that I think was really, I think has been incredibly effective in streamlining some of our complaints and sort of the concerns that we get within our department from residents and others. We are complaint-based and driven in terms of code enforcement, but it allows us to funnel all of those comments, rather than being scattered to different people in our departments directly into one person who's responsible to that. And then it may balloon into multiple other people, but at least it starts there, and a lot of things can get resolved just at that level with that one person. I do think, you know, there is value, especially when combined with a single individual who can do both code enforcement and building inspection as well, supplement there as needed, that that's going to be important, whether, you know, we're sort of booming or sort of just, you know, not booming going forward. I did want to mention, it was also mentioned, that we have, now have two senior planners. Actually, our second, we, as you know, Doug Bush left in September. He was an associate planner at the time. We just started this week our new hire, Martha Battaglia. She started yesterday as a senior planner, and I think my idea there is really that we have sort of two senior level, given the capacity and the need. We want the best people we can. One is going to have more of an emphasis on policy-level work, long-range planning. I mean, if you're in a bigger jurisdiction, you have, you have sort of a long-range departments with, or divisions within planning, and maybe a current planning division, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to have that. Everybody needs to be able to do everything, but at least an emphasis on policy work on one end, and an emphasis on current planning or project development on the other hand. So we have that. And then thinking forward, we still are likely going to need some at junior level as well. So it's sort of, that's how I see the organization working best moving forward. I'm currently working with our admin analyst, who's at the front, who's great, and working on having her sort of dabble in some planning-related work as well, something that, you know, depending on staff, if they have the interest and capacity, I think that's a great way to supplement the work that we have and that we, the need that we have for doing more in the Planning Department. So that said, if she goes there, some admin work may need to be backfilled. So that's sort of an overview. I also know, you know, Todd wanted to emphasize, this is a living document, you know, this is really a good tool for all of you to provide some context, just to where we've been as an organization, maybe where we're going, but it's going to, it's sort of ever-evolving, and I'll, I'll end there and have questions. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Yes.
I do, is there more of a, I'd like to finish the presentation, then we'll ask questions.
Yeah, okay, so just wanted to follow up.
What's that? Yeah.
Mayor Ravazio with Councilmember Kuhnhart, just to clarify, we did lose one Director of Field Maintenance, and we added two maintenance workers. And so I'm looking at the current budget, which you're welcome to look at online, I know you have a hard copy. That was a net savings. savings of $30,000. So we went from about 828 to 897, or 928 to 897. So it was a small change, but more staff, in my opinion, in the right places. So Adam and I and Todd will follow up with you at a future meeting with more detail. Obviously, this isn't an action item, this is a presentation. But when it does come down to anything that we would recommend you authorize, we'll be back at a future date. We're happy to take any questions, comments.
Any questions?
Yes. I have a few, if you don't mind. I would love to have you guys take the next step, which is, I mean, I got some really interesting takeaways, and it's very good work by everybody. Lorena, in particular, nice putting this together. It's a good foundation. But presumably, it's with an eye towards, how can we improve the town in some meaningful way, either budgetarily or service or something, right? I would love to have it from your perspective, who actually has to do it. Like, what do you think? You know, do we, and let me, so that would be my first request, is the next time you do this, please add on the next step. We sort of get some takeaways when we saw. I wouldn't mind your suggestions for how we make our town even more awesome than it already is. Let me ask you, what year was the recession? Was that 2008-ish?
Eight through 10.
Q4, 2008.
Okay. I remember during those years, we, like, manned down, or maybe we just reduced hours?
We reduced about 30% of the staff.
So I didn't really see that on the charts, though. How is that?
It was like 2009, I think that was.
I mean, maybe it's a question for Lorena. I don't know. How, I'm sure we had less people for about a two-year period. I remember, like, the clerk's office was closed for, like, but maybe we just reduced hours? I don't know.
There is a chart that...
It does show that?
Close to it.
Go back one.
It's a, it's a stacked chart.
I think there was the...
Four.
This might be you going back. All right. It's this one.
Oh, the total?
One of you is going back and the other forward. There we go.
So one of the issues you're dealing with in that question, I can help you read it, is the fact that, you know, the downturn really hit in the middle towards the end of 2008. And so a lot of the responses that would have happened from the town would have been in fiscal years 10, 11, 12, 13. Because of the way we looked back in fiscal years 99, and then in fiscal year nine, you're not, we're not capturing those, that downturn to the best of my knowledge between fiscal year nine and, say, fiscal years 10, 11, and 12. But we can, we certainly, we have those numbers and we can add them.
So you didn't show the buildup up to seven and then...
Correct.
Okay.
I just, I think that's a, an exercise to be mindful of, because I hear on the radio and read the papers on a regular basis, we can expect, within the next two years, a 40% chance of a recession again. We know it's going to happen eventually. I'm not suggesting any immediate action, but it'd be good to have a plan in place. There's something missing from the numbers, the chart that showed the aggregate amount spent on, like, contractors as opposed to full-time employees. I don't know, Adam did a very good job of pointing out a qualitative factor there, which is the number of permits. And I want to talk to you about that in a minute, Adam. But Lorena, I don't know how to suggest it to you, and maybe one of my smart brothers here on the council can figure it out. The qualitative difference between using an independent contractor and a full-time employee is somewhat mysterious to me. I can hypothesize arguments that would make it a good thing or a bad thing. I don't, maybe you'd have to go department by department and figure out, for public works, Peter, is it, I mean, I would assume it's always useful to have some component that are independent contractors, because it gives you flexibility. On the other hand, I don't know, maybe that you get, you don't get the same service, maybe you get more service, I don't know. I wouldn't mind a qualitative component to there somewhere. I'm sorry, that's a too, it's a pretty vague thing. The second thing is, that chart with the numbers, are you factoring in benefits and retirement benefits and so forth that we have to pay for full-time employees, when you're factoring in the gross dollars or that we're paying for each of those numbers?
No, because those are...
Hold on a second, Lorena. We do in the budget. We don't in this chart, because we do not include full-time equivalents in this chart. Remember, this is just contract staffing. So this is what it cost us, full cost out the door. But to your other question, Sloan, that really does come around to it. So full-time employees, obviously, get a much different benefit package. The town of Corder Madera is very generous in terms of, you know, medical benefits. Dependents are covered. And so that, the fully burden rate depends on a lot of different factors. But we can quantify that. But that is one of the biggest differences, is, you know, when someone's a full-time employee, you know, the level of training, the commitment to the town, the knowledge base, all carries on, but so do the expenses. Whereas, a lot of these contracts are per project or per term, and they are easy to, let's say, renegotiate, as we did in the public works area with landscaping.
Okay. So one of, I'm sorry, I'm almost done here. One of the things, Peter, about your part of the presentation, that I really appreciated, but it's got me thinking now, was that I took a takeaway that you don't always save money by using independent contractors. Sometimes you're saving money by having more employees. I just want you to factor into that calculation, all the monies that have to be paid, including the long-term retirement benefits and so forth. Maybe you already have, and maybe you just answered that question. But that was just what I was thinking. It's a sort of a surprising takeaway. I had presumed that although we may be losing something intangible by having independent contractors instead of full-time employees, I presume we were saving money. And now I'm sort of being awakened to the idea, maybe we're not saving money. Okay. Adam, with respect to the planning staff, that's an extraordinary increase. How are you and your staff able to keep up with almost a doubling? I mean, not quite, but the building permit seems like a pretty fair metric in terms of work. It's extraordinary, the amount of work that had, are we just, like, super efficient? I take it hiring a code enforcement guy has helped, right? That has winnowed down a little bit, the surplusage of overlapping work or whatever. But how, are you saying, am I supposed to take away from that, you need more people? Like, what was I supposed to take away from that?
Well, I think, let's see how we can put this best. I mean, I think there may be a need for additional services or times. I mean, I think one of the things we're doing, there's a lot of ways that we can manage the increase in permits. We've done that through, as I mentioned, hiring some additional building inspectors on contract for the town when we need to. The real concern I would have, and we haven't seen this yet, you know, would be, sometimes you get jammed up, and you start to see a slowdown in sort of turning plan checks around, for example, or something like that. That's when the concern, if we're not delivering in terms of our expediency on plan checks and getting back to our customers in the time and manner that we set as our goal, that becomes a concern. I mean, I think, so it's tough, because you don't, from my perspective, I think we're handling the increase. Everyone's working very hard, I will tell you that, and being very, you know, working very diligently. Sometimes, you know, it ebbs and flows a little bit. So I think, but I guess to say this, it's something we're about, I'm constantly evaluating. And I think the numbers, as I see it ramp up, and this is a good exercise for all of us as well, because we see this, and I, you know, I do write reports on an annual basis, but you look at trends. And it's something that we'll have to evaluate with our, with staff, and we check in on, see how our staff's doing. But I think we're, we're, we just look for more efficient ways of managing the workload. And I think we're doing a good job with the increase. But I'll get back to you. How about that, if there's any requests on that side?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jim?
Let me see, two questions. One is, after the financial crisis in '08, '09, '10, I have the impression that there were a few abandoned properties around town, where foreclosure was started and then no one, somebody moved out because they were being foreclosed, but the banks never got around to completing it. Do we still have that problem? And how are we going to handle it if it occurs again?
That's a good question. I mean, I wasn't here during that period. I, that is, as far as I can tell, that is not occurring today.
Okay.
You know, so I know of maybe one or two properties where that's the case. If, you know, I would be curious to know, from the experience that you're relating here, what the issues were with that. Was it sort of dilapidated properties? I mean, is it sort of just the vacancy and sort of non-maintenance of the properties during that phase in which...
Folks noticed that the grass was five feet tall.
Yeah, okay.
And details like that. But...
Right. Well, we do, I mean, so with respect to that, there are, and I think the council did put in place, around 2012, the nuisance ordinance, abatement ordinance, which could be, you know, put into effect and be utilized in those instances where nuisances are actually a result of abandoned properties. And therefore, ultimately, you can go through that process, which ultimately comes before the council. But then, the result of that could be a lean on properties for the work that we do to maintain it, you know, basically, to keep it from being a nuisance. So that's perhaps one strategy that could be employed.
The other thing is, I vaguely recall that maybe two, three years ago, you guys were looking at new software and were going to implement it. Have you done so? Has it worked out well?
Right. So we actually came with you, came to you in the last budget here, right before, I think it was May. And we talked about the software program that we were going to use for permit tracking moving forward, which was the Excel Up program, and that was authorized through this 18, 19 fiscal budget. So we are actually in finalizing the contracts with that. And there's one or two last remaining items that are, Todd's been very much involved with that, as long as Brian Fenty, in getting that to implementation. But we expect, in short order, the ideal time is late January, early February. It's relatively slow to start to implement that. That's going to be a major sort of training piece of work that we're going to do, all need to do on our end, in public works as well.
Okay, good. Thanks. Any other questions? Yes, Eli?
Thank you. A couple of questions for Director Wolf, if I may. First of all, I was struck by the sharp increase in building permits. So I'm just curious, what does that mean? Is that just like an indicator of the community's economic health generally? Is that...
Yeah, I think it's, it's the amount of activity of people investing in their homes and their properties. I do think code enforcement has played a role in that to a certain degree. Not that that's the objective at all, but it has led, we do get complaints or notifications that people are doing work, and oftentimes without permits. And so we'll have the code enforcement person go out and say, hey, what's going on here? And then they come in and get a permit. So I think, I'm not sure exactly what percentage is related to that, but that I suspect has some effect on the number of permits we've seen. But yeah, I think it's economic activity, it's people feel confident in that they're, you know, improving their homes, their wages are maybe improving, so on.
Thank you. And then the other thing, I cannot help but notice that planning and building contracting costs are like 10 times what they were in 2009. Is that directly related to the sharp increase in building permits, would you say, or?
It's the two, yeah. So it's the part-time building inspection, contract help, and the full-time code enforcement slash building inspector, inspecting, sorry, inspection, inspector that we have hired. So...
That full-time guy is a contractor, though, or?
Yes, full-time contractor. So we hire, you know, we've, we've worked with a firm who has, it's been the same person. And I mean, that's been important, having that consistency. But yes, it's a, so adding up all the hourly wages and costs over the full course of a year is what you're, you're looking at.
Got it. Thanks. And Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment, or does that have to wait?
Let's wait for comments. We're just doing questions now.
Thank you.
To what extent are those costs covered by fees?
Well, it's, it's, I don't have the exact number on that, for the most part. And I think maybe one indicator is that, and I think Todd just relayed this to us today, but from our budget, in terms of the planning and building department budget, about, I think, 80, we were at 80% covered by the fees that we, in terms of revenues received from fees at this point. Inspection services generally covers itself. You know, and that also relates to a couple of the large projects that we've also had come in. A lot of the fees depend on valuation. And so with some of the bigger projects, you get more revenues in that any particular year. But I can, I can try to follow up and get a little bit better percentage on that.
Accurate enough.
Okay.
That's good. If there's no other questions from council, I'll turn it over to the public. Are there any questions for staff from the public? No? I'll bring it back for council, if anyone has any final comments or anything.
I apologize, I intermixed my comment with my question, so I'm sorry about that.
Okay, you're forgiven this time.
My comment is just that I strongly agree with Councilmember Bailey. I think it's a great idea to develop sort of a contingency staffing plan now, when there is no crisis, so that we're prepared, you know, if revenues drop off really suddenly. There doesn't have to be an element of panic, sort of coloring how we approach that. That's all. Thank you.
I'll just add to that with a bit of historical perspective. In the Q4 of 2008, we lost 15% of our sales tax revenue overnight. So if you can imagine, that's such a huge part of our budget. It was enormous.
Terrible.
It was terrible, yeah. I mean, and we ended up laying off, like, 30% of the staff, you know, within a year. I mean, it was really, really brutal. And a recession, you know, we are a sales tax dependent, so recessions hit us harder than other towns, because property taxes aren't really affected as much by them. So I think a contingency plan's a great idea. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, the purpose of the consent calendar, the group items together, which are routine, have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. They can be approved by a single motion, and any member of the town, council staff, or public may request removal. So I will entertain any motions for removal of an item. Anybody want to remove an item from the public? No?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make one comment on one item, if I may.
Sure.
And that is the expiring terms on town boards and commissions. There is one vacancy in the vector control board. So if there's anybody out there who has expertise in biology, in mosquitoes, in pesticides, is concerned about West Nile virus, or any other aspect of that subject, there's a open, open seat on that committee, still there. So...
Okay. Then I will, if there are no further comments or no requests for removal, I want to entertain a motion.
I will move all the items on the consent calendar, 411 through 418, for approval.
Second.
417.
418.
Is that eight, or is that three?
Oh, he's just, like, different.
Uh-oh.
Oh, well.
Jim has a different, oh, look. No, no, you've got a weird page.
Yeah, well.
Just ignore that.
I have 48 online.
Oh, he prints out his own.
I see.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazio.
Yes. Okay, there are no sanitary district items on the consent calendar. There are no public hearings. Our first town business item is possible action and discussion to adopt a resolution to revise portions of the mission's scope and operating guidelines of Bicycle and pedestrian advisory committee. Rebecca and, I think, Peter.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. You may recall that this item was carried over from the December 4th agenda, so that we could add additional information regarding the requested revisions to the staff report, and the agenda title for greater transparency. This item before you is something that is typically done annually, extending BPAC for an additional year. But we were late in the extension in 2016, which carried into 2017, when we dissolved the accessibility advisory committee and rolled some of those duties into BPAC. And at that point, the BPAC was extended for a year and three quarters through December 31st, 2018. At this time, the motion before the council is to consider extension of the committee through December 31st, 2020, so an additional two years. With, oh, and since the 2017 extension, Director Brown is new... Director Brown is, is new on the staff and had a chance to look at the resolution and recommended, um, some minor amendments, including amending the mission of the committee to include the words transportation safety, amending the scope of work of the committee to include provide input to public work staff on transportation improvements, and amending the operating guidelines of the committee to include, um, language that the meetings should be held six times per year or as needed and at times and locations as specified by the chair occurring every other month. Um, also, before you on the dais and in the back for the public is correspondence received from the committee vice chair, David McPherson, who wanted to let the council know that he supports the resolution and the revisions, but also wanted, um, to include an additional proposal which, um, reads that he would like the council to consider the BPAC definition of Corder Medera residents to also include an owner or management staff of a Corder Medera business or a staff member of the Larkspur Corder Medera School District or Redwood High School. In the event that the BPAC is approached by a motivated staff person from, for example, a local business, um, et cetera, or the schools, it would be beneficial for the BPAC to have the authority to select that person as a BPAC representative despite their home being outside of the town limits. Um, if that was an addition that the council was interested in entertaining, um, in looking at the draft of Resolution 64, 2018, um, I could add a whereas clause and, um, amend the composition, uh, section number four, the composition of the BPAC to include that if desired. Um, thank you.
And the only thing I'll add to what, um, our very capable clerk Vaughn pointed out was the other change, which instead of saying that the BPAC shall be comprised of nine members, one thing that we thought might be worthwhile is for the BPAC to determine if, uh, they wanted to have membership less than nine. So they certainly can keep it at nine, uh, but this resolution as drafted, I think it's your fifth whereas, throws that back to the BPAC themselves and say, hey, make yourselves up of nine, make yourselves up of seven or five. But the one clause that remains is that at least one member, um, should have an expertise on the accessibility issues. We thought that was important to, to retain.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Any member of the public have questions or wish to comment on this? And I will bring it back to the council for comments and a possible motion. Is there a slot?
I just have one, I totally agree with the concept of everything that, um, David McPherson says. The concept of having the discretion within the BPAC to reduce the minimum number of members to five or seven or whatever, and also the concept that a business member should be invited to participate if they're, if it's going to be helpful to them.
Yes.
The concern I have is not something, and I'm happy to make the motion by the way, is I think we should probably involve our town attorney in the drafting of this language. My two cents is it's like not as good as it could be, uh, to put it gently. And, um, I wonder if what we could do is to, um, suggest that David or you, Bob, since you're in charge, maybe just say that the concept is, I don't know if you can do this, but with the wording to be approved by our town attorney. David?
I'd just add a simple suggestion is that in that composition paragraph, just add, um, town of Corder Medera residents or business representatives.
Sure.
We, we can, you can approve the concept, and if you want to delegate the authority of someone to work with me to write it, we can do that. We can, um, I, I can bring it forward and then it can come forward on your consent calendar next time. The difficulty is, is that your, your meeting won't be until January and this commission sun sets. So, um, uh, you could also approve it as it is, and then I could bring back another resolution next time amending it if the full council wants to see it. We can do any of those options.
Okay, I will, I'll make a motion to approve it as is. Um, and so that's the motion. But then to, after we vote on the motion, I'd like to ask through the mayor that maybe to request our town attorney to bring back a new and improved version at the next available time.
Okay.
Second.
If you, if that was a motion, that's a second.
That's a motion.
Was that, was that a motion on both of those things?
Yes.
Yes. May I ask, um, one point of clarification before the vote is done officially?
Yes, you may.
The suggestion by the member of the public was that, um, the business representative would be limited to, um, one person. So, um, it, it would be a, um, not a requirement that there be a business or a school representative.
Correct.
Right.
But that there would be only one business or school representative.
Right.
Is that what you would like this to read?
That, that is, that was my intention.
That makes sense to me, too.
Okay. David?
I really want to keep this simple, and I'm, I'm betting that some of the existing members have affiliation with either Redwood High School or a business, or they work nearby, or they, they're, they're, you know, people have multiple. So I wouldn't limit it to just say, oh, there can only be one person who works in the town.
No, 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 I think the concept was that one non-resident business type.
One non-resident.
Okay.
No more than one non-resident.
Or business rep.
Everyone else has to be a...
I'm going to agree with that. I'm going to agree.
So I think the motion is already on the table with those clarifications just, and we're ready to vote if you are. Or I can make a fresh one if Teresa thinks I need to.
I think we're good. I think we're good.
You got it?
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazia.
Yes. Okay, moving on to six point one point two, discussion and possible action to adopt a resolution approving the Corder Medera Chamber of Commerce 2019 budget and approving the financial statements for the years ending December 31st, 2017 and 16. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Ravazia and council members. Um, I would also like to point out that, uh, members of the chamber, um, incoming President Stan Hoffman and Julie Kritzberger are in the audience this evening to answer questions when we get to that point. Um, in the meantime, I'm just going to read a brief background. This, this is an item that comes before the council every year in December as, um, stipulated in a resolution originally passed in, uh, 1990 after the voters approved an increase in the transient occupancy tax in 1989, um, to go from eight percent to 10% with that additional 2% being, um, transferred over to the Corder Medera Chamber of Commerce.
Go ahead.
And, uh, the stipulation is that the council approves the chamber's budget annually. Typically, it is on the consent calendar, but given that we have two new council members on the council this year, and, um, there were some changes to note in the line items offered in the chamber's budget as presented, we felt it might be a good time to schedule this as a business item so that you can ask any questions that you may have of the history of this or of the budget before you. Um, the budget itself is included, um, with the staff report as attachment three. And just a couple of things that, uh, Todd and myself saw that we thought should be pointed out, um, was that the staffing cost breakdown was different, was performed differently from the previous year's budget. Um, in previous years, it was one line item all rolled in together. Um, but one of the items, the executive dress, executive director has asked for in this year's budget is an increase of $20,080 for an assistant to the executive director, which she has not had since 2011 and, um, has been relying on volunteers to fill that void. Um, another item is an increase in $13,000 for the executive director's work schedule to increase from four and a half days per week to five days per week. And this year, there are also separate line items for payroll taxes and, um, benefits. Another item was a decrease in $1,990 resulting from a reduction in funding received from two sponsors. Uh, there was an increase in $582 in the rent line item. And there is also an increase in $17,500 in the line item for business and town projects, um, which staff was informed is attributed to allocations made for a Caltrans right-of-way improvement project, a possible contribution to the Small Business Development Center, and, um, any other special project needs identified in consultation with the town manager. Um, please let me know if you have any questions. Otherwise, we can bring the executive director to the podium. Thank you.
Any questions from Rebecca from the council? No. Okay. Did you want to speak, or what do we? No? No? No, no, okay.
Stan's not going to miss the opportunity.
Oh, come on, Stan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, council members. I'm Stan Hoffman from the, uh, Corder Medera Chamber. I want to tell you that the Chamber of Commerce takes its responsibility very seriously. And I think that's evident when you look at our Independence Day Parade and the facilities in the park and the other things the chamber does for the community, all outlined in the, uh, in our letter, which I won't bore you with. I do want to point out that, um, while there is no change to the 2019 budget that we're requesting you approve tonight, um, we did screw up the 2018, and that needs to be corrected. In our attempts to break out the, uh, assistant and the payroll taxes as separate line items, we neglected to put those line items in for the 2018 budget. So that's why we're off. Um, again, that won't change what we're asking you to do tonight, but, uh, Julie will make those corrections. That's why Julie's looked in distress all evening long when we saw the, uh, the numbers missing. So we'll make that correction and, and get that to the, uh, to you ASAP. But, um, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Stan, does that mean then that we can't approve it as proposed here? Do we need to leave it open or something?
No, no, it may, well, I, I can't make that determination.
If we, if we, first of all, I totally agree with what you're saying. I just want to make sure that I don't, we don't as a group approve the wrong thing.
We're asking you to approve the 2019 budget.
Okay.
And the 2018 numbers, by the way, the audit that's attached has the correct numbers in it.
Okay.
So, um, we'll ask you to approve the 2019 budget tonight.
Okay. Any other questions for Stan from the council? No. Okay, then we will open it up to the public. Any questions or comments from the public? If not, then I will bring it back to the council for comments and a possible motion.
Can I ask one question of Rebecca? Rebecca, are each of the five, six bulleted points here under the discussion within the proposed resolution, or the budget, rather?
That's correct. They were, um, in the budget, and we just thought we should point out any differences from the previous year.
I'm good with all of them. Just wanted to make sure they were all in there. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council, or we will entertain a motion if someone would like to...
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 66 slash 2018 approving the Corder Medera Chamber of Commerce 2019 budget as presented and approving the financial statements audit for the years ending 2017 and 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Bah humbug. No, yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Bah humbug. Oh, yes.
Mayor Ravazia.
Yes. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Stan. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to item six point one point three, discussion and possible action to authorize public works to approve a professional service contract in an amount up to $318,636 for design services. Peter?
Thank you, Mayor Ravazia, members of the council. Jared Berio, our senior timber engineer, is the project manager for this. He's not here tonight, so I'm going to talk a little bit about this item and give you a little background, remind you that, uh, back in earlier, uh, 2018, in the last fiscal year, uh, we brought to you a few discussion items on the town's need for what we're now calling the Town Hall Edition. Uh, currently, there are three staff members, uh, in the Public Works Engineering Team that work in the firehouse. Um, and with our fire consolidation, uh, that firehouse is needed 100% for fire services, and so we're temporary squatters, so to speak, um, in the firehouse. Uh, but more than that even is, uh, you know, our downstairs environment. Uh, we have a lot of staff, uh, planning, building, public works, um, administration, service staff that don't have a lot of space. Uh, and our public counter is probably not the nicest public counter in Marin County. If you come in to get permits and, and deal with, we're in a very confined space. And so, um, we know that we don't have a conference room. Uh, a lot of our conferences and meetings occur here in this chamber. So there's no doubt that we have a strong need for, um, a staff building and a public interface for our permit, uh, work. So we had that discussion with your council, uh, I think on two or three different occasions in the last fiscal year. And, uh, the budget that you approved in the CIP was for $300,000 for architectural engineering services, uh, in the last fiscal year, and around two to 2.5 million in actual construction costs. So, um, we put out an RFP, uh, going forward with your direction on that CIP item, and I'm happy to report that, um, the actual contract looks to be around $305,000 for these services. So just 5,000 over what we thought. Uh, the number that's in your title, the 318,000, is, um, contingent upon, uh, if the environmental clearance, the SEQA clearance gets a little more complicated. Uh, we've, in talking with our potential consultant, we feel that we may need, um, a little bit more money to fin, to finish a more complex SEQA document. Um, so that's a little background on it. Uh, more to the point, uh, to the east of this building, probably, uh, as, as far as I could throw a baseball, about 15 feet on the other side of that wall, um, we imagined a new building, um, that's connected, has an interface with this building, the original town hall. Um, it takes up most of the space onto the driveway, uh, between here and the firehouse. We looked at the site, we did a geotechnical analysis, we looked at different parts of this town hall property, the back end of the parking lot, uh, near the town-owned home, as well as the far corner over near the post office. We analyzed the soil, the slopes, um, and for multiple reasons, including, uh, soil, uh, stability, this location, um, is the preferred location, so we're pretty sure on that. We also like the fact that the future building would, um, have an interface with Tamil Pious, uh, uh, drive here, and really, again, connect with the existing town hall. And so we really see this as a, an important project that, uh, the, the town council and citizen and staff are going to undertake. And this is the kickoff of that. So this is the contract that hires, uh, the architects and the engineers to really work with us. They will definitely plan on several meetings with the council. We think community meetings are going to be really important. We know that the community will have a lot of opinions and input on what the building look like, looks like, um, how it's designed, what features it has, um, the level to which it's a green building, for example. Um, all those things will be considered and developed during, um, the contract that's before you tonight. So, um, those are my remarks. I don't know if you had anything to add, Adam, but other than that, we can take any questions or comments from the council.
Questions from the council?
So your projected total cost is how much?
The budget is, uh, I, I would say, if you add the 300,000 plus 2.2, it's about a 2.5 million dollar budget, uh, that's in your CIP. Uh, that's what we anticipated last year spending. Um, and so, uh, we'd like to stick to that number. If we do need more, we would obviously have to come back to you for more.
For 3,500 square foot? That's being funded out of what revenue source?
Mostly out of our sales tax revenue source.
The total scale?
Other questions, Jim, or? Okay. David, do you have a question?
Excuse me, yes. Total square footage?
We don't know yet. That'll come out in the design process. Uh, we're looking at both one and two-story buildings. Uh, we're looking at all of the needs for the public, uh, the counter, uh, office spaces, open offices, closed offices, uh, one and two stories. Two stories obviously means we need to have an elevator, we need to meet all the ADA requirements, uh, but we have a smaller footprint. Uh, so I think the square footages that we're looking at are in that range, um, 4,000, give or take, but we don't know yet.
Any other questions?
I, I think I saw the mention of LEED in their, uh, agreement. I'm very keen on a green building standard. I'm not so personally, uh, concerned about LEED standard, per se, because I think it's a more expensive route to the same goal or goals. But I'd love to see solar and maybe even ground source heat pumps being considered in this new, new building. I'd love it.
Good to know.
Any other questions? Then we're going to open it up to the public, uh, members of the public. Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council for comments.
Sorry, comments just made.
You couldn't get the not to exceed down to that 300,000? We had to get that extra 5,000 in there? No, I'm kidding.
I just had one comment, which is to make sure that the community workshops that we do happen early in the process, that the public knows about this. This is going to be a prominent structure that a lot of people are going to see every day. And we're, I think we should make sure we get a lot of input early on to make sure everybody's good with this, where we're going on this.
Agreed.
Then if there are no further comments, I will entertain a possible motion for item six point one point three. Anybody like to make a motion? Um, to authorize public works to approve a professional... To authorize Public Works to approve professional service contracts with Kappa Architects?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Public Works Director Peter Brown to approve the proposed Town Hall Complex Edition Design Services Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazia.
Yes. 6.1.4, awarding a contract for developing a climate adaptation plan to Adaptation International pending and subject to Caltrans approval with a cost not to exceed $250,000, with $200,000 covered by state grant funding and the remaining paid with Measure F sales tax funds. Peter, back to you again.
Thank you, Mayor Ravazia, members of the council. This is the second contract before you tonight. It's a totally different realm, however. As opposed to the last item, this climate adaptation plan I would propose to you is one of the most important documents that this town and this council will take on. It is our attempt to deal with what we know is occurring in terms of weather patterns, drought, sea level rise, fire frequency, those type of things. You don't have to be anywhere except under a rock to not know that these are the headlines of the news today, and they will be in the future. And so when I came on board, the timing worked out such that there was a grant proposal due right around that time. And I worked with Adam and his staff, and we put together an adaptation grant that was accepted by the state. Caltrans funding source for this really wants us to address the transportation system. Transportation is the nexus of all activity, and so we're going to need to make sure that how everyone moves around in the future of this town is resilient. And of course, everything else comes along with that, our land uses, our economic generators, and of course, the well-being and the quality of life of the residents and business people in town. And so we did an RFP for this, and we got really good responses. We interviewed the top two qualified proposals, and they were both really good. The main reason why we selected Adaptation International was really the strength of their team and the strength of their project manager. And so we felt like this particular team had enough experience, are cutting-edge, have been doing this type of work long enough. Not a lot of people have been doing this work for very long, but a 10-year positive track record of this type of adaptation work was impressive to us. And similar to our last conversation, Mayor Ravazia, this is required to have at least three community workshops. We envision things like joint workshops with the Flood Boards of perhaps Larkspur and Corder Madere. We envision a Planning Commission meeting, perhaps dedicated entirely to input and guidance on this plan, as well as meetings with your council and community forums, because, you know, we have the technical expertise, and so does Adaptation International, to really answer some tough questions on how we should plan for infrastructure and policy and resiliency in the climate adaptation realm. But it's, the impacts and the opinions of the citizens are going to be super important. And so Caltrans has emphasized that in our scope of work, and so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Other than that, I'm, again, happy to take any questions you have. The cash match from Caltrans fell a little short of the proposal, and so there's two actions. One is the authorization to enter into the contract with Climate Adaptation International. And then the second action is to allocate $50,000 in Measure F revenue, which, I'll remind you, one of the selling points of Measure F really was to focus on this type of work. And so I believe, at least from the voter's standpoint, they expect this money to go to this cause. So any questions or comments? Happy to take them.
Questions from the council?
Yes, Jim, did you?
Has the Sales Tax Oversight Committee actually reviewed this $50,000?
No.
Okay.
Yes, David?
I am unclear as to the scope. I think it sounds very exciting, the source of the majority of the money being Caltrans. How much of our infrastructure can be covered in this or is expected to be covered in this? Is this just Highway 101? Is this all our streets that are near sea level? Is it, how extensive is the scope? Or does it cover the whole town?
Yeah, so Mayor Ravazia and Councilmember Kuhnhardt, it's a town-wide assessment. So we're looking at every land use, every residential neighborhood, every marshland, wildland, creek. We're looking at all of our roads, major and minor, and we're looking at all the different sectors of adaptation. So that's why I mentioned, you know, sea level rise is a popular one, but it's not the only one we have to deal with. And so I would say it's as broad of a scope as we could come up with in order to address adaptation in general. I do think there are some key pieces of transportation infrastructure. One of the reasons why we rewarded the grant from Caltrans, in my opinion, is because of the low-lying nature and the critical importance of 101 through Corder Madere. So I don't imagine we're going to do much without addressing that particular issue. But again, it's a broad scope, and we plan to address multiple sectors and all components of town.
Additional questions? Yes, Eli?
One question. Is Adaptation International's proposal publicly available, or will it be made so?
We can make it publicly available. I think a better course of action that I would recommend is to, we have two scopes right now. We have one that was awarded a grant from Caltrans. We have another one that Adaptation International proposed to us and said, okay, if you hire us, here's the things we could do. What we need to do at this point is to meld the two. And so early on in this process, I think we're going to have to refine that scope, and we're going to have to make sure it meets Caltrans' requirements. But, you know, I'm happy to put any of those documents online if the council prefers. I would also think there'd be some wisdom in giving us a few months to really hone in it, because it's going to change, right? What we got from both Caltrans and from Adaptation International won't actually be the final scope that we work under. So there's a little wisdom and some pause on that.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Yes, Jim?
Yeah. You know, I initially understood this to be studying basically flooding on 101, which would take care of everything to the bay when it comes to flooding. With your comments that you're going to look at the whole town, does that also mean we're going to cover the fire issues up in the hills?
I believe so, yeah. I think it's going to be critical to look at fire risk and resiliency in terms of the fire environment, especially in California and the West. You know, I see an entire chapter of the plan being dedicated to things like drought and fire, because it's going to be very important.
Okay.
Any further questions from the council? If not, I'll open up to the public for questions or comment. Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for comments and a possible motion.
I'm willing to make two. No one wants to make a comment? I'm going to make a comment. Go ahead. I do. I'm very excited by this, and I also wanted to congratulate Director Brown for winning a place on the whole, is what's it called, the Bay Adaptation Group that you have won a place on. So you're clearly keeping up your professional training, even as we're jumping into this with both feet. I think it's really exciting. I agree with you. This is one of the most important things that we could be doing. I also agree with you. I personally sold Measure F, partly on the basis of keeping our infrastructure up to snuff in view of likely future occurrences and events. So I think this is spot on. I think it's going to be a wrestling match over what the scope is with this, you know, a quarter million dollar project and if we're going to cover all of these various issues around town. But I look forward to being a part of that wrestling match. So thank you very, very much for doing this very, as well as you've done. I also think the Blue Point folks, who are the subcontractor, one of the subcontractors have a really excellent track record in exactly this kind of public discussion and outreach that you're anticipating. So they're very well-known for that for the last decade or so, maybe more. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Yes?
I'd just like to reiterate for the thousands of Corder Maderans watching raptly from the comfort of their homes that this is a quarter million dollar report that we're getting for 50 grand. That's going to be critical to addressing the most complex and expensive issues that our town's going to be facing in the coming decades. In my opinion, this is critical work that's long overdue, but I'm really excited that we're getting to it now. So thank you to all of the staff work that brought us here.
Any further comments, or is there a possible motion?
I'd like to make a motion to, A, authorize the Director of Public Works to enter into a contract with Adaptation International LLC, and that we authorize up to 50,000 to match Caltrans' 200,000. Notice, I left out the Measure F sales tax revenue as the source. Let's double-check with the Sales Tax Oversight Committee that they agree that that's the source. Otherwise, we can get it out of the operating budget.
I second that.
I just wanted to clarify the motion insofar as the, we would need to have Caltrans approve before the Director could authorize. So that was, are you including that as part of your? Caltrans would need to approve it before we could enter into the contract.
Okay.
And so with that proviso, he would have the authority once we got the approval.
Yes.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Mayor Ravazia.
Yes. Okay, Item 6.1.5, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution accepting the town of Corder Madere greenhouse gas inventory for community emissions and government operating emissions. Phil, over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Phil Boyle, Senior Planner with the town. I'm just here to briefly talk about the greenhouse gas inventory update and just give an intro to it, but really to introduce Christina O'Rourke. Christina O'Rourke here is the Sustainability Coordinator for Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, which is an organization that Corder Madere has been involved with in many, many years. And she's going to talk about the greenhouse gas inventory for both the community emissions from 2016 and government operations from 2015. And so I will hand it over to her, and your action, if you choose, is to approve the resolution that is attached, which would be accepting this report. And so I'll turn it over to Christine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Christina O'Rourke, and thank you very much for having me here tonight. I'm going to be giving you kind of a brief overview of the greenhouse gas emissions inventories. And we'll start with the community inventory, which is for the year 2016. That's the latest year that we have all the data that we need in order to do the calculations. That's why there is a two-year lag between the last inventory. It's always that way. And then we also have the government operations inventory, which was done for the year 2015. We're trying to do those, an update of those municipal inventories every five years. They are a lot more data-intensive and take up some staff time, so we don't do those as frequently. But we're doing the community inventories every year now. So I am here on behalf of the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership, and we have been around since 2007, and Corder Madere has been a member of our organization since then. These inventories have been funded with a grant from the Marin County Energy Watch Partnership, which is funded by public goods charges that's collected and distributed by PG&E. So I'm going to start with the community inventory. And the first thing that I'd like to do is kind of go over the emissions that we count in our inventory. So first of all, we're counting emissions from electricity that's used in residential and non-residential buildings and facilities within Corder Madere. We're also counting emissions that comes from natural gas use in residential and commercial buildings. We count emissions from passenger vehicles. So those, we're counting any trip that starts and ends in Corder Madere. And we're also counting emissions, half of the emissions, I should say, that start from trips that either start or end in Corder Madere. So a resident who is working in San Francisco, we're going to count half of that trip. An employee who lives in the East Bay and works in Corder Madere, we count half of that trip as well. We're counting emissions from commercial vehicles and from buses within Corder Madere. We count emissions from the use of fuel that is used to power off-road construction and landscape maintenance equipment and vehicles. We count emissions from the decomposition of organic waste in landfills. And then finally, we count emissions from the energy that's used to collect and treat and transport water and wastewater. So that's what we're counting. There are a lot of emissions that we don't count, and that's really because we just don't have reliable methodologies and reliable data to do the emissions and to, more importantly, kind of track them from year to year so we can say how well we're doing. So we're not counting emissions, what we call upstream emissions, from the manufacturing and transportation of products and food and fuels. We don't count emissions from air travel that Corder Madere residents do. We don't count emissions from ferries or trains or subways. Basically, we're not counting any emissions from energy that a Corder Madere resident may use or transportation emissions when they're not in, within Corder Madere, with the exception of that half of those vehicle miles traveled trips that I was just talking about. So recognizing this, in 2015, the Air District commissioned a study by Cool Climate Network to kind of come up with, quantify or do an estimate of what the total carbon footprint looks like for households in the Bay Area. And this is a look at the household carbon footprint for Corder Madere. And so the emissions that we're counting are basically the ones that are shown there in the blue. We're also kind of counting some of the services, so it's not a really hard and fast line there. But I just kind of wanted to show you in comparison the emissions that we're not counting. So they're showing 47 metric tons per household. Our inventory shows about 22 metric tons per household, so just something to keep in mind. So the emissions for 2016, this is the emissions by sector, and total emissions were about 84,000 metric tons. Most of them are coming from the transportation sector. About 75% of those transportation emissions are coming from passenger vehicles. And then the next largest sectors are residential and commercial. And then the other ones, those other sectors, are actually pretty small, relatively speaking. So I wanted to look at, well, first of all, these are, this is the emissions trend for community-wide emissions since 2005. You're actually down 31% since the beginning, so you've already met that 2020 goal, which was 15% below the 2005 level. So you've met that. That's your local goal, also was the state goal. We're now on our way to meeting the 2030 state goal, which is 40% below that 2020 line. And then ultimately, this is where we need to go by 2050, at least this is the state goal, is to reduce emissions to 80% below that 2020 line. That, if we can achieve that, is designed to keep global warming, at least doing our part, to keep global warming to 2 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. We're already at 1 degree Celsius, and we have had a recent study by the IPCC, which says that we really need to hold global warming to 1 and 1/2 degrees Celsius. So keep all of that in mind. We have a long way to go. This is how Corder Madere is stacking up against the other cities and towns in Marin County. You are leading the pack, which is, and I know I've mentioned this a couple of years ago when I was here last time, that's really because of the Wind Cup plant. When that closed, it really dropped your natural gas and electricity emissions. So that's why you are way at the top there. But still, good news. This is a look...
We would call it dominating. If Todd was here, he would say we were dominating.
Dominating. This is a look at emissions, the change in emissions by sector. So if you're looking at that commercial energy, you can see why so many of those metric tons have come down from the commercial energy sector. But emissions were reduced in all of those sectors. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of the reasons why these emissions are going down and by looking at the different sources of emissions. So first, let's look at electricity. So electricity use is down 30% since 2005. So part of that is the residential use, which is down 13%, and the rest of it, the commercial use, is actually down 37%. So that's kind of what I'm talking about with the Wind Cup plant. So your emissions are down 30, your electricity use is down 30%, but emissions are actually down 59%. And that's because the carbon intensity of electricity is so much lower than it was in 2005. So first of all, we have PG&E electricity, which is actually 40% less carbon intensive than it was in 2005. That's due in part to the renewable energy that they're bringing online. And then also MCE, their electricity has been, historically speaking, since 2010 when they started, it's been less carbon intensive than PG&E electricity, some years more so than others in 2010. In 2016, it was just 3% less carbon intensive than PG&E electricity. MCE carries about 78% of the total load here in Corredira. MCE's goal is to be 100% GHG-free by 2025, which is great news because that means that emissions are going to continue to go down in this sector. So, and for that reason, we really see an opportunity here to convert vehicles to electric vehicles and also to convert natural gas appliances and systems, like heating systems, to ones that use electricity, because then you're going to be swapping out those very dirty or dirty fuels for almost GHG-free electricity. Looking at the natural gas sector, natural gas use is actually up 5% between 2015 and 16. And that's because we find that natural gas use is highly correlated with outdoor temperatures. So when it's a colder year, we're using more heat in our homes to warm those homes. But it is down 51% overall since 2005. Again, we're seeing the same thing. So it's down 16% in the residential sector, but it's actually down 74% in the commercial sector. Again, a lot of that's due to the closing of the Wind Cup plant. So one of the things that we're seeing, of course, is because as the climate is warming, this is kind of one of those good news things, we're going to be actually using less natural gas here in the Bay Area in the future because we'll be using less natural gas to warm our homes. Natural gas emissions, because those emissions from electricity are getting smaller and smaller and the high emissions from natural gas actually now represent 63% of all the emissions from energy use in Corredira. And homes are using almost 2/3 or over 2/3 of that natural gas here in Corredira. So therefore, we really see an opportunity to continue to improve the energy efficiency of buildings in Corredira, especially homes, and again, to convert those natural gas appliances and systems to ones that use electricity. Looking at the transportation sector, vehicle miles traveled are down 2% since 2005. This is based on models that are done by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, by the way. Transportation emissions are actually down more, they're down 14%. So that additional decline is due to the improvements in fuel efficiency of the vehicles that are on our roads. That said, transportation emissions are still 68% of your total community emissions. So in order to really continue to drive emissions down, we really need to put more energy into this transportation sector. And here, we see the biggest opportunity is to reduce emissions through adoption of electric vehicles, especially, as I said, because our electricity is so clean and getting cleaner. Looking at the waste sector, landfill waste actually hit a low in 2011, but it has since gone up. Waste disposal actually increased 15% between 2015 and 2016. I also know in 2017, it went up yet again. Waste emissions are still below where they were in 2005, but we can do better. So here, we see an opportunity to try to reduce emissions through composting of organic waste, also better sorting of recyclables, especially organic material. And then finally, in the water sector, per capita water use has declined 24% since 2005. That's the MMWD average. Emissions are actually down to about 70, are down 78%. And that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, Sonoma County Water Agency, which supplies 25% of MMWD's water, has been using virtually GHG-free electricity for a while. Now MMWD has also committed to going to deep greens beginning in 2017. So we'll see emissions go down basically to zero in this sector. Here, we see not only opportunity, but a real need to continue to reduce water use, especially to be prepared for future droughts that we're expecting through climate change. Now turning very briefly to government operations, this is a look at your inventory for 2015. Emissions here are about almost 780 metric tons. So emissions from municipal operations are less than 1% of the total community emission. So it's a very tiny piece, but still nonetheless, it's really important because you kind of are model to the rest of the community. So most of your emissions here are actually coming from the waste sector. Next largest is the vehicle fleet sector. And looking at emissions, they've declined in all sectors except for waste. Waste went up quite a bit. This is the data that was given to us from the Marin Sanitary Service. And there, what we're seeing is that the waste that's in the town cans almost doubled since 2005. Not exactly sure why. Emissions in the building and facility sector are down for a variety of reasons. First of all, your electricity use is down 2%. Natural gas is used, use is down 7%. And then again, of course, the carbon intensity is much lower, so that's why you're down to a total of 23%.
Switched to deep green for the municipal.
You switched to deep green in beginning, in the middle of 2017. So these emissions are from 2015. So that's going to be able, that will continue to drive emissions down. Public lighting, your emissions were actually, your electricity use was flat. So all of that reduction is there because of the lower carbon intensity of electricity in 2015. Finally, looking at employee commute, emissions are down 26%. I would just say that the, these employee commute emissions are based on surveys that we do. We had, I think it was 70, we had a 45% response rate. So take that with a little bit of a grain of salt, but it looks like there were fewer employees in 2015 than there were in 2005. So that's one reason for the decline. The other reason was that it looks like there's an improvement in the fuel efficiency of the vehicles that employees are driving to work. So here with government operations, we see a few opportunities. First of all, as you said, your decision to purchase deep green electricity, that alone is going to reduce those emissions 18%. So you were at 9% reduction, so this will actually, that one thing alone is going to reduce your government emissions down to 27%. Also converting streetlights to LED, that would reduce your electricity use 20%. We suggest considering all-electric vehicles and plug-in hybrid electric vehicles for your municipal fleet whenever possible. There are more and more models coming online as well, so there may be more opportunities in the future to convert to electric vehicles. Also consider using renewable diesel. That would reduce emissions another 4%. And then finally, we would suggest working with Marin Sanitary Service to identify opportunities to reduce landfill waste. Couple of just quick slides here, just because these are kind of interesting. This is your deep green participation rate at 0.7% and how you stack up with the other cities. And then-
What's the year of that?
This is 2015.
Yeah, I think it's better now.
Oh, no, it might be 2006, it's 2016. And yes, it may be better now. And then, oh, and I would say that Fairfax is way up there at 12.2%. They've been very, they've, they actually partnered with MCE to sign up people for deep green, and they've been really, really aggressive in getting deep green participants. The other thing is in 2016, when the, when this was done, Fairfax, Osleito, San Antelmo, Belvidere, the ones at the top, were all cities that were purchasing deep green for their municipal operations. So that's one of the reasons why those are so high for this, for this year. And then the last slide is ZEV ownership rates. This is data that comes from DMV. And this is as of January 1st of 2018, so the beginning of this year. And ZEVs are both, are battery electric, all battery electric cars, plug-in hybrid electric cars, and fuel cell vehicles, which are a tiny, tiny percent of ZEV ownership rates. Corredira is at 2.2%. One of the things that I mentioned earlier is just this real need to kind of get this ZEV ownership rate up. There is, the state has a goal to have 5 million ZEVs on the road by the year 2035. And what, we are now updating a lot of climate action plans in the county. And what we're kind of seeing is that we need to get about 25% of all of the vehicles registered in Marin County to be ZEVs by the year 2030 in order to meet those, that next aggressive reduction goal. So we're at kind of 2% to 3% in the, in the counties. We need to get that up to 25%. We think it's doable. It's kind of an aggressive goal, but we definitely think it's doable, especially as more models come on, as the price parity we're expecting, or the industry is expecting by the year 2025, will actually be just as expensive to get. You'll go into a showroom and the sticker price will be the same, whether it's an internal combustion engine or an electric car. So hopefully that will help to increase ZEV sales. So that is, that's my last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions from the council on the report? Yes.
Maybe I missed an explanation, but why the heck did our waste emissions go up by 82% 10-year span there?
Yeah, so that, so we're comparing data that we had, were provided from Marin Sanitary Service in 2005. And, and most of them, most of the different accounts looked kind of the same, but the big one was the town cans, and that almost doubled. And I don't know why. It may be just that they're counting something that they weren't counting in 2005, but that was something that was, because one of the recommendations would be to actually sit down with Marin Sanitary Service and see exactly what's going on.
That's like the trash cans in parks and things?
Those are the trash cans in parks. And, and I don't know if that's also like, maybe at the, at the malls, or, I don't know if you are collecting the-
Imagine.
If your home can gets full, take it to the park.
I mean, yeah, uh-uh, something's up there. Yeah, I mean-
So it's something to investigate.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess I have one other question, which is just, we're getting killed by the community in terms of like relative emissions reductions. Like the, the community's reduced emissions by 31%. We've reduced by 9%. We're getting our butts whooped by the people we're supposed to be setting an example for. So I guess I question, is there, is there like, are there immediate steps that we're targeting?
I'm not sure if that's directed at me, Councilmember Beckman, but you're looking at me, so I'm turning on my microphone. You know, so from, from the town's use of energy standpoint, a big chunk of our energy goes into our pump station system, so we move a lot of water. And we do so at all different times of year, whether it has to do with tides or keeping our lagoons and canals at certain levels. So, you know, as we upgrade our pump stations, there will be, you know, 19 sanitary and 10 flood control pump stations, so 29 pump stations. We may build a few more in the near term. I think as we overturn that technology, we can use more efficient pumps, we can look for opportunities to improve our energy usage. You know, I know there's some interest from your, your town staff management in converting more of the fleet. We have a few town cars that we use that could be, you know, electric vehicles. Again, the new building is going to have a smaller energy footprint. There's a lot of opportunity, in other words, I could keep listing them, but I won't. So I'm glad the community is that far ahead. But I do, I assure you that we will continue to look for opportunities as we go forward. But I would just throw in the caveat that most of our energy is going to go into moving all that water with our pump stations.
So the pumps are electric, right? So, but, and the town's already gone deep green, right? I think we did that last year, right? So is that kind of, is, does that make the efficiency of the pumps a moot point in terms of-
But the deep green didn't show up in the metrics.
Right, 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 right.
I think the other thing is also, I think it was attributed, significant of that 31% was attributed to the closing of a manufacturing plant, which we're not going to be closing any of our-
Right, no, yeah, that's fair.
Station.
That's very fair.
Flood protection station.
And actually, so the deep green electricity will reduce your emissions, the municipal emissions, by 18%. So that plus the 9% gets you to 27%. So you're actually close.
And, and, right, we didn't close the factory.
You're close to 31 at that point.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Christine, for the report. Do we do this because the state's goals require all the municipalities to create a report like this, or does our general plan, or what's the, what is the reason? It's fascinating data, but what's the reason we collect the data? Is there some requirement to do so?
We're not required by the state to do it. The cities and towns have kind of jointly decided that, first of all, there's, there's money available from PG&E for planning. So this is one of the things that we can use the money for. And then we just find that, you know, being able to track where we are and identify opportunities where we can do better is, and kind of bringing this forward every year and reminding everyone that this is something that we need to do is in itself beneficial, whether the state requires us to do it or not, and they don't require it. There's one caveat, SAMRFALE, because they use their climate action plan as what is called a greenhouse gas reduction strategy, and they use that for sequent streamlining of projects. They are required to do an emissions inventory every year.
Okay, I'm sorry, just one other question. Christine, in one of your first graphs, I think it was called Corredira Emissions and Targets, you showed how we were sort of midway between our, we already passed the 2020 local and state goal, and we were shooting towards the 2030. I don't, although I don't have all the numbers in front of me, it looks like we're flattening out. I don't know if that's my imagination or not, but are we on target so that in, by 2030, we will hit that goal?
Well, that's why we have the climate action plan, to try to, you know, to see if we are going to meet that goal. According to the climate action plan, it was designed to, to meet the goal. I think, I think first of all, one of the things, kind of the easy thing here is with the reduction, you know, with MCE going 100% GHG-free, and then we also have PG&E, which will be reducing there, they need to go GH, completely GHG-free too at some point in the future. So that will help to drive emissions down, mostly really, you know, there's a lot of things to improve, improve, continue improvement of energy efficiency, and also the electric vehicles is a big thing. So, did I answer your question, though? I mean, I, if you're-
Those are all great suggestions, but I'm wondering if maybe for next year's presentation, you could attach to it whether we're on track to meet the goal or not. Not just, here's how we could do better, but you're actually on track, you're going to beat it, and now let's start looking at the next goal. Or alternatively, if you're going to meet that 2030 goal, you're going to have to do the following things.
Right. So that, so the 2030 goal is really, what I would suggest is that you actually look at your climate action plan and then measure your progress on that plan. Like each one of those measures, what are we doing? How are we implementing those? How effective have they been? I think that would be a good way to kind of look at if you're on track or not.
Okay, thanks.
Could, could I follow up? I do. Could you please, Christine, go to the slide that Sloan was just referring to?
Sure.
Which is the years and the projections forward. And I wanted you to give us a sober, yes, exactly, that one, right there, and add that. It is true that we are flattening out. We've made the quick adjustments, the low-hanging fruit, if you will. Would you give us your honest assessment of how much work it's going to take us for, to get really to that 2050 goal, which is what we've got to be, if we're going to have any chance of meeting the IPCC's warning, that we really need to try to keep it to 1.5 degrees, not 2 degrees, because there's a gigantic difference between 1.5 and 2.
I agree.
Are we, are we, or is this, is this a whole lot of behavior that we need to change in order to make that line go down further?
Well, it's absolutely a lot of behavior that needs to change. So I've been working with Corred, with SAMRFALE on updating their climate action plan, and we can get to 20, this very aggressive 2030 goal, but really, a lot of it, it hinges on widespread EV adoption, as I said, getting to 25% of the vehicles on the road to be EVs by, by 2030. Without that, we don't really get there. The electricity is kind of taking care of itself. The transportation sector is a big sector for all of the, throughout Marin County. So the, you know, we've been for years now trying to get people to bike and walk and take public transportation, and those numbers just haven't budged for years. So, you know, that's not to say that we shouldn't continue trying to get people out of their cars. There's lots of good reasons for doing that. But really, we see that electric vehicles is probably where we're going to be able to do that and how we'll meet, and I think we can meet the 2030 goal. I would say that when I started doing this kind of work back in 2010 and looking at the 2020 goal, and I just kind of thought, we're never going to get there. This is crazy. Okay, fine, we'll try. And then we've met it. We all met it, you know, four years early. So I wouldn't say that it's impossible. As far as getting to the 2050 goal, I don't know how, I mean, I honestly don't know how we get there without, because there's, we have so many, our homes are already, our buildings are already here. We just aren't building that many new buildings. And converting the appliances and the heating systems to natural gas is going to be the, that's going to be the toughest thing, I think, to do.
You mean from natural gas?
From, yes, from natural gas. Thank you, from natural gas to electricity. And, you know, there's only so much we can do with energy efficiency. And, you know, there's only so much we can do with energy efficiency, so that's going to be the next thing to try to deal with. But I'm not giving up hope, because like I said, I was, you know, very surprised we made the 2020 goal, so.
Any further questions from council?
No, thank you.
Then I'll open it up to the public.
Good evening, Council. Peter Chase of Corred Madera. Ms. O'Rourke was before the commission three years ago, and a report came out. At the time, the commission lamented the fact that there really are no teeth, but we realized that this was a report on status, right? And the need was for the town to create goals, objectives, and implement actions out of that report. So I don't know that we have that many implementations in progress out of the fine data and so forth. And at the time, we encouraged that to happen. And Mayor First, as you see in these meeting notes, said, there's nothing in this report that says we have to do anything. You know, it's just sitting there as data that the town needs to take action on. So at a point, you know, how can the town take action? By creating some goals inside of its policies and planning and building, and then create awareness in the community for some of this stuff. So I know a few people that have EV vehicles in town. And it's not something that people think, I want to go buy a $45,000, $50,000 EV vehicle, right? They don't get what it saves them in money. So there's a lot, that's just an example of promotion of ideas and implementation of strategies that I think needs to occur. And maybe the town creates a budget for taking stuff out into the public realm, out of this report, out of the conclusions, and really put it in the minds of the residents. The, on the east side of town, they're doing the trial program from the trash pickup and so forth. I don't know how that's going to break down elements, you know, and if that can be implemented, that makes more efficient use of waste and reduces it to the extent that it doesn't have such an impact on the environment. And that's in the face of so many producibles being sold in the world, right? So more packaging, more stuff that needs to get recycled in the world. You know, the deep energy program is something where it's like carbon credits, you know? The town doesn't actually reduce its electricity. You're buying better electricity. So that's sort of an implication of better electricity reduces our count. Again, it's public information promotion, getting it in the public eye. And I would encourage the town to, and the council, to develop a policy that puts it into the hands of a group of people to actually advertise, put it out there, and get people aware of what can be taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Any further comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for comments, discussion, and a possible... We can also just, yes, we can accept a motion to approve the resolution accepting the town greenhouse gas inventory for county emissions.
I move resolution number sixty-seven to eighteen.
Sixty-seven to eighteen? Twenty-eighteen? Or sixty-eight?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, two thousand and eighteen. Six point one point five.
And I second that motion.
David, I think you're looking at item six.
You're looking at six point one point six?
The next item.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor of Alzio?
Yes. So now, six point one point six, discussion and possible adoption of a resolution adopting a modified 2016 Town Corred Madera Climate Action Plan and discussion and possible direction to staff. I'm going to proceed with an update. Phil, back to you again.
Thank you. This dovetails nicely on the discussion you just had. And I just want to add a little bit more information to Christine's comments and also Chairman Chase's comments regarding the Climate Action Plan. And so that's what we're talking about now. Before, this plan that Christine just presented was, again, was an inventory. And so the Climate Action Plan became before you, back in two, before the council, and numerous members here were on the council at that time. That came before you in 2016. And that was a lengthy process, and Christine was paramount in creating that document, working with staff and all departments in the town in creating the 2016 Climate Action Plan. And as Peter Chase pointed out, near the latter part of that discussion, the council directed staff to add some language to the beginning of the Climate Action Plan. And that language is on page, paragraph two of page one of the staff report. The council was concerned, and some of the public were concerned, that the 2016 Climate Action Plan put the town in positions where it would be held accountable for unfunded mandates that may not agree with or cannot afford. And so the council directed staff to add the language, which is on page one of the plan, that says, "This document does not and is not intended to create specific and forceful obligations by the town. Rather, it is intended as a reference tool for future actions." And at that point, so the Climate Action Plan was brought back to the council, that language is added, and the 2016 Climate Action Plan was approved, but not adopted. Since that time, specifically Councilmember Kuhnhart wished the council to examine this and examine that first section of the Climate Action Plan and discuss whether that language should be removed from the plan and whether this plan should be formally adopted instead of approved. And so that's sort of the first item of business with this agenda item. And the second item of business is to have a discussion, which I can certainly help facilitate and add comments to, how to and if to update the 2016 Climate Action Plan and what directions you'd like to go in that process. So the, I'll just, maybe I'll stop there. And you can discuss the first item in terms of modifying the first page of the 2016 Climate Action Plan and whether to formally adopt it instead of just approving it, as was done in the past.
And if I may, Phil, just add a couple of things, just in the staff report regarding the second of those two items in terms of what an update would entail, there's some information here specifically. We're not talking about a wholesale rewrite in discussing this with Christine and some of the work that she's currently doing for other jurisdictions. She's already offered to take a look at our current plan and what potentially it would take to sort of update the 2016 plan and make it a 2019 plan. So that information is also included in the staff report, the specifics there. So just wanted to give you that background and go from there. So thanks, Phil.
Okay, so then I guess I'm going to open it up to questions first off from the council. And we're just going to talk about the adoption of the plan at this point, and then we'll come back and we'll talk about directions.
Yeah, that's my suggestion. It's, you know...
Okay. What is the legal... Follow your lead on it.
What's the difference between adoption and what we did last in 16, accepted?
Want to explain that?
I'm sorry, what is the question?
What is the difference between adoption and accepting? You know, I'm sorry, last time it was approved, but not adopted. You know, and I think, Christine, you may want to jump in here as well, but really, there is, I think it's largely sort of the level of commitment it may sort of relate to the public in the way that we were talking about sort of the ideas and being a leader in this arena. There's, it's more of a perception. There's no current obligations or requirements that the plan puts on the town, and that would not change whether it's approved as it was in 2016 or whether it's adopted if you choose to do that this evening. So that does not, does not change. So it's largely, I think...
Cement.
Cement, yes, but also maybe what comes with that in terms of what the council is really saying is its commitment to this plan is.
So it doesn't necessarily change town policy in any way, shape, or form?
Correct.
No, it doesn't. Just more of a, yeah, like I said, more, like Adam was saying, more of an intent. And I think it maybe puts the level of importance of that plan.
So it formalizes the intent more than, but it doesn't actually change anything we're doing in a substantial way?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions from the council or...
Yes.
Item five one and five two. Five one says we're going to plant fifty new trees per year. Five two is we're going to plant ten new trees per year. How exactly will that reduce the wildfire risk?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Andrews, what page are you on? I missed that.
Oh, forty-one, I believe.
Page forty-one of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. And your question is, how is planting trees going to reduce fire risk?
Yes.
Yeah, my guess is it may have a different goal.
Obviously, it wouldn't reduce fire risk. I think sometimes you have, you know, different things are working at cross purposes. So, you know, so if there were areas where trees could be planted, maybe near freeways or near roadways, where it would, you know, where it could be done in a fire-safe manner, that would be, you know, more appropriate. But, you know, the other thing, too, is you're planting trees and vegetation, and they're using water. So sometimes that could also work at cross purposes with trying to conserve water. And, you know, that happens.
Any other questions?
No.
No. Then I think we will entertain, is there a motion to adopt the modified 2016 Town Corred Madera Climate Action Plan?
I would like to move resolution number sixty-eight dash twenty-eighteen to adopt formally the revised Climate Action Plan.
For a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or...
I just wanted to verify whether we did public comment for this item?
Oh, I'm sorry, we did not. I'm sorry. I don't think we did.
No, we didn't.
Is there any public comment on this? I'm sorry.
Nice work, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Nice work, Adam.
Okay, hearing none, then we will come back. Sorry.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember...
Sorry, just clarification. I think it also means...
Sorry, this is as revised, I think. Is that what you...
He did. He said that.
I apologize. Sorry, that was...
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
No.
Mayor of Alzio?
Yes. Okay, so motion passes, and we now move to providing direction to staff?
Yes, so that the second half, as Adam indicated a little bit, second half is on page two of the staff report, the discussion of how or if the council would like the 2016 Climate Action Plan to be updated. We've listed six bullet items there are some key points that Christine has identified, and that would need to be integrated into the plan to bring it up to date. But it's up to the council if it wishes to have other items of the plan updated. And as we indicated in the staff report, we have an estimated cost. And then also, council may want to think about what type of public outreach would be involved in terms of meetings before the planning commission and/or public meetings. So it's really a direction we're seeking of how much and when would you like the Climate Action Plan to be updated?
And just a little bit more on that, the current plan talks about updating, that was approved in 2016 and then just adopted this evening, talks about updating the plan in 2020 originally, and then it's generally recommended every five years, I believe, we would take another look at the Climate Action Plan. As I, and as we're discussed here, really, we're talking about potentially doing this in the upcoming year. So that would be a discussion item. Thanks.
Okay. So you're looking for direction on these six items? Did I have that right or...
Those are, those are just six examples and six things that we feel would be included in the update. And so that's kind of the bare bones, and then, but if you'd like more, but that would be...
I think right now we're looking for direction, whether we should go forward with this in 2019. What we would probably do is come back to you with at least these six. This would sort of be the things that you would have to update in order to get this up to sort of best practices and best standards. And then we could have a conversation at that time about the specific policies that would be in the plan, how to revise them, change them, so on and so forth. And so we'd likely see a couple of meetings would be required when this actually came back. Obviously, for the public to comment, council to comment on that, and then we would come back with another revised document for approval. Adoption.
Okay, so you want us to give you direction on whether or not to move ahead with the update?
Yes.
Correct? Is everybody understand that?
I think so.
I'm not sure that I do, but if you guys do, then...
Am I correct in assuming that we can spend $5,000 for an update this coming year and be cool until 2025? Okay? Or otherwise, we wait a bit longer and shell out $20,000 to $25,000?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's quite that precise. It's probably, we just did the estimate based on what it would be, given the current state of affairs. I imagine if we waited, for example, to 2020, there may be new measures that, or new legislation that might take some more time to update it at that time, that we would want to incorporate into the plan that may take some more hours. So it's a point in time number. It probably wouldn't change substant, I think, I'm making an assumption here, but probably, we're not talking about $20,000, $20,000 by, if we do this in 2020 rather than 2019. We're talking probably in that order of magnitude of maybe, maybe another $3,000, $5,000 if we waited until 2020. I think there are some, maybe Christine, you can talk to this a little bit, given that these numbers are coming out of the conversations that staff has had with Christine about a current update.
So as I mentioned just a little while ago, I've been working with the town of, the city of San Rafael to update their plan. And that's been something that has gone on for about, oh, at least probably a year and a half now. And they appointed, they have like a twenty-member steering committee that we've been meeting monthly with and talking to experts. So all of that work has already been done, and I'm using that as a template to update the other plans, the later, the older plans. So you're kind of benefiting from all of that work that's already been done in order to do an updated plan now, to bring it up to that standard. So if we wait another year or two, well, then we kind of have to do some of that work over again. And like Adam said, we already, you know, who knows what other best practices will be out there, what new legislation will come forward. So it would probably, most likely, take more time at that, at that point. The other thing is when Adam asked me to kind of, you know, look over the plan and see what would be needed to bring it up to date, I was really trying to make it a very targeted update and to, to make it, you know, just, again, bring it up to the same standard as the other plans that are going to be adopted in Marin County. But to not, just to not go crazy with it, to just do something really targeted and make it as cost-effective as possible.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I shift the nature of the conversation a little bit?
Can I just ask a question to staff first?
Absolutely.
And then I'll bring it back to you.
Absolutely.
I'm not clear what we're doing anymore.
And do we need public comment before we give direction?
Yeah.
We should, we should.
I am just really confused. Are we, are you asking for us to approve spending $5,000 to update the plan with this direction specifically? Is that what you are requesting here? I'm sorry, someone else knows this?
I'm with you, Bob.
Okay.
Well, it wasn't a specific request or authorization for that funding at this time. It's my impression that that could come out of one of our operational budgets at this time. However, we are looking for direction that this is something that you would like to see staff proceed with at this time and see this come back to the town council within... see staff proceed with at this time and see this come back to the town council within 2019. We left it open in terms of this next. And it's something you're recommending? You know, this, we are, there are costs of savings, I think, and we have already started the conversation. It's not, we really want to hear from the council whether this is something we think we should proceed with. I mean, it's not, we would, we're going to be doing it in either the next year or two because that's what our current plan says and we probably need to look at it again. But yes, it makes sense from staff's perspective to move forward with it at this time, I think. So, yes, I guess we could say we are recommending it, but we also definitely want to hear from the council on whether this is something they.
And again, we are not voting, we are providing direction on whether or not to tell you to proceed with updating.
With an update. Correct. Does that? I kind of agree, I'm a little confused as well, but the concept is that this is going to have to be done, we can take advantage of the efficiencies from. And I'll just say, this is part of it, and this goes back to, I think, the last item on the agenda where we talked about sort of approving versus adopting a climate action plan in the first place. When we say we, you don't have to do an update to this plan in 2020. It is in, recommended as part of the climate action plan that was approved, but it's really on the council's own determine, makes the, can help make the determination about whether or not you do that or not. So we're looking for direction, partly because the last time we brought the Climate Action Plan to you in 2016, it wasn't entirely clear how strongly you want to pursue the policies in the, in the Climate Action Plan at that time. So we need, that's why we're sort of not, we need some further direction from, from the council as to whether or not this is something you want to do and want to see done.
And if I could put Councilmember Kuhnhart on the spot. Councilmember Kuhnhart recommended at your last meeting that the Climate Action Plan be brought to the council in December. And so that's why we, it's part of the reason we have it here. And again, as Adam said, is to have, have a discussion. You know, this, this plan was softly brought in to the town back in 2017. You just made a motion to give it a little bit more officialness to it. And now, terrible word, and now, you know, where do you, where do you want the plan to go next? And if I can put Mr. Kuhnhart on the spot again, maybe.
We're not approving, we're not approving anything.
You're not approving, you're, it's a discussion.
We're looking for direction from us on whether or not we should, you should update.
Mainly, as the item says, we're asking you for, for, to have a discussion and possible direction.
Okay.
Are we under any sort of either actual state mandate to have one of these?
No.
Or are we on, in one of these situations where the state's heading that way, so we might as well get organized because we're going to end up there anyway?
I do not think so. Back in, like in, back in 2016, this, the same issue came up. But no, this is a, this is a document that provides the town with a menu of choices, a variety of ways you can reduce the amount of resources that the town consumes. And it's a, it's a menu, and you can choose to pick the items off the menu, and this is a toolbook, whether it's, you know, electric vehicles, whether it's, you know, a variety of different things, whether it's changing the types of pump stations, that type of stuff.
I don't, speaking for myself, now, I don't have a clear sense that we're being provided good options here. We all would like our town to be awesome in terms of climate action. None of us want to spend any money to do it. We all would like to be, there are some minimum thresholds that no matter what we have to spend, we ought to spend because it helps protect our town or it's the right thing to do. On the other hand, there's a surplusage of work that we could be doing, which would be kind of amazing, but probably not a rational use of public funds. I wouldn't mind a little more education, if you will, about what's appropriate or industry standard, or why we ought to be doing more or less or something in between. I just, I'm, I believe, Bob, I, I'm with you on this, which is not that I'm against it, maybe I'm 100% for it, but I don't have a clear sense what the hell is going on. And I wouldn't mind a little more direction. Could we just bring it back maybe to another meeting for more discussion where you could provide us a sense of what other towns are doing or why it's something that you think it makes sense? Well, I'll tell you, the reason I'm saying it, before you say anything, Phil, I appreciate the comment, but it's not helpful from my perspective anyway to say, here's a menu of a bunch of things you could do, please give us direction.
No, I was just.
It's just too big. I can't, I can't do it.
Let me clarify, I was describing the plan itself.
Right.
That the plan itself, which you adopted in 2016, is a menu of things the town could choose to pick from.
If you try, yeah, I mean, I tried to explain it the best way I could, and I think really that was, that was why we brought it to you tonight, was to understand, it, it's like any plan, it lists policy goals, it lists objectives.
Right.
But we currently have a plan that does these things. And I thought you were asking us, do you want a better one? Is that what you're saying? Yes, one that's up to date to current standards. Correct.
It looks from the staff report like you're just asking, should we spend about five grand to update the facts in this 2016 report to reflect the facts of the matter now?
Correct.
Correct? That's, that's what you're looking for direction on?
Correct.
Yeah.
And would that include the benefits of us going deep green at the town level? What are, what other changes?
Yeah, I think Christine outlined that, but yes, it would. It would provide the, which indicate the benefits of going deep green.
All right. Does, I got a question broader. Does us having an updated Climate Action Plan help us in other areas, for example, in grant writing proposals like the one we discussed earlier in the meeting? Does it help in any way? Is it beneficial for us to have something that's up to date and that we're on top of?
Mr. Mayor, I think my answer to that question would be yes. And hearing this discussion and, and looking around the room and seeing the question marks, I recommend that we do bring this back.
Okay.
It sounds to me like there's enough questions and enough confusion that, you know, staff can round up and come back with a little more concise, a little more clear ask of you. And we can certainly do the things that some of you have mentioned in terms of comparing what are the cost benefits of updating the plan, what kind of things will we get out of that. I, I propose we just come back with a little more clarity for you all.
I appreciate that suggestion. I'm not asking that we spend a huge amount of staff time trying to figure this out. I don't feel like I, I don't know, maybe I'm developing a comfort level. I'm happy to let somebody else lead on this. Yeah, I mean, the point here was not to get into specific policies or anything of the details of the plans itself. It's whether to update it with current facts, I think as Councilmember Beckman said, as, you know, things as plans, you create a plan that's supposed to last to 2030, every so often you update plans, that's what, you know, that's what you do because new information arrives, there's new facts, and, and there may be a need to revisit some of the things that are in the plan. But specifically, it was trying to understand from, is this council interested as a, as a body, as government, governing the, sort of the policy direction of the town in, in sort of following through with this document as something that should be updated and should be kept up to date and something that should be followed, I mean, and should be looked at in that, in that manner. So I, I don't know how else to, you know, we can come back and talk more about what the Climate Action Plan is, if that's helpful, and why we do it. But I, you know, I, I'm not sure exactly what we would come back with other than, other than what we, what I just said.
Well, I guess, I keep tripping over the title. They call it the Climate Action Plan.
Okay.
But that's misdirection. It's really a greenhouse gas emission reduction plan. The Climate Action Plan would be what you're going to be doing about how we keep 101 dry and what sort of wildfire mitigation we're going to be doing. And all this is saying is, here's some steps we can take that might help us 20, 30 years out, which is.
Right.
Except, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think the root of the climate, you know, changes in some respects relates to the GHG emissions that we just discussed in the last report. And, and so getting, you know, it's, you're right, it's a little bit of confusion there. That's action versus adaptation are two different ideas here. One is sort of how do we get at minimizing the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that we have?
Which will help us a couple of decades in the future.
Which, which will help us get to those, you know, try to help us get to those goals that may actually reduce the effects of actually the, the changes that we are starting to see and that we'll, we'll see, continue to see in the future. And that adaptation plan is going to address those, those issues that are going to happen regardless to a certain, we're talking about to what degree, you know?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I think that we are talking about mitigation actions, and they are actions, and I hope they are actions, that we should be undertaking now, not just for 20 or 30 years from now, but for five years from now. One of the reasons why it's perfect to have this graph up there is, is the rate of negative change that's been identified by the scientific community is accelerating. And all of the scientific evaluations are backwards looking. So the most current scientific evaluations, which scan thousands of reports, are all looking at the history, and all of those are saying, we need to take faster action now. And we have 12 years before we start getting to critical failures in food, in water, and, and in wildfires. The action plan that the county is undertaking is called Drawdown Marin. It is, it is, as Jim references, drawing down GHG emissions. But the county has already endorsed a resolution and an action plan and hired a person, and we are one of the slower communities in the county catching up to the climate action planning process. Now, I don't care about having a big fat report on the shelf. And I don't think that, that the professionals in the room are talking about having a big fat report on the shelf. We're talking about these action steps which we should be taking to enhance the removal of gas and the introduction of clean electricity. And as, as Commissioner Peter Chase said before, this is, to a large extent, about the promotion of ideas and strategies. And I think that what we ought to be doing is adopting a program that says, yeah, we got to keep our eyes open, we got to keep our head above water, and we have to be constantly promoting new ideas and strategies to reduce greenhouse gas emissions.
Okay, I want to move on eventually from this at some point.
Well, for 20 minutes, I've been listening about saving $5,000. And this is, I'm talking about, I'm talking about saving the planet. I'm talking about not expending hundreds of millions of dollars, billion, hundreds of billions of dollars. That's what I'm avoid, trying to avoid, is the expenditure of hundreds of billions of dollars. That is what the latest IPCC report and the latest national report, even by the current administration, said, we can save ourselves hundreds of billions of dollars if we start taking faster actions now. And so I would suggest that we do need to move on each of these things, which are consistent with what the county's doing.
When you say these things, you're talking about the six.
All of these steps, all of these steps, which I think are the highest priority steps, they're properly identified, properly rendered as the highest priority things. And I would say that, that there's almost no more important thing except for adaptation. And there's the dual, constant dual balancing of mitigation and adaptation.
Okay, so you're in favor of these six actions, and you'd be in favor of spending the $5,000 to update the plan? That's what we're trying to give.
At least.
That's all we're trying to give direction.
Okay, well, at, at least.
So you're in favor, but I just want to clarify.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Eli?
Yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Sure. Jim?
Yeah, what the hell.
Yeah, okay, I think we're all in favor of it.
Good luck and God bless.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
You saved us.
Pardon? We had public comment at the beginning. If you got really something you want to say, please, go ahead. And three minutes, please, Peter, thank you.
And if you throw us back into discussion, we'll never.
Peter Chase again. From reading Christine's.org website, Climate Action Plan, the purpose of the Climate Action Plan is to compile existing potential strategies that local government and community at large can take to address climate change. Then down below, it says, you know, local state policies, local and state policies and actions that may impact greenhouse gas emissions within the city or town. Quantification of greenhouse gas reduction measures demonstrating that, if fully implemented, the greenhouse gas reduction target will be met. So to David Kuhnhart's impassioned statement, it is the most important thing that we can undertake to say, let's spend $5,000 for Christina Rourke to come back to us with a little more refined data and keep at the top of the list in the town's priorities, this idea of health and well-being and better practices in this community, by the community. I think that's most important. Please.
Well said.
Thank you. Staff, do you have appropriate direction?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Then I think we can move on to item 6.1.7, discussing possible direction to staff again.
Oh, God.
Oh, no! Related to general municipal elections. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Ravazio. I recognize that we are at the end of a rather lengthy agenda. So I'm going to.
Do we have to make a motion?
Nine thirty. But I am going to give you an out that after we get into this discussion, if it seems like there may not be consensus and there, it's, you're able to extend this discussion to the next meeting, which would be January 15th, without too much issue. I just, I feel like an ordinance would need to be passed by the end of March in order to, for me to be able to do the notification that I would need to be doing. So don't feel like there's any pressure to reach a decision tonight and provide me with direction. That being said, the issue before you tonight is to initiate a discussion and provide direction to staff regarding the additional changes that will be needed to the town's municipal elections date to ensure continued compliance with Senate Bill 415 and, and then the recently enacted Senate Bill 568, which changed primary elections from June to March. As noted in the staff report, our current elections ordinance refers to a June election date. So it could be as simple as updating the ordinance to refer to statewide primary election, which in this case would mean moving elections to March, or discuss possibly changing to statewide general election if the council decided that they wanted to consider moving to a November of even year election. So the first part of the discussion is what would you like the town's election, when would you like the town's elections to take place, either statewide primary in March or statewide general in November of even years? And then once that discussion has consensus, the next item that needs to be discussed is the election currently scheduled for November of 2019, at the end of next year, which is currently on the books to elect two council members to four and a half year terms to end in June 2024. Now that June isn't a, an option, the November election, November 2019 election should either be amended to coincide with whichever option you select in the first discussion, or possibly considering canceling the November 2019 election and extending the terms of those two council members to potentially March of 2020 or November of 2020, depending on, again, the direction you choose in the first option. I think that is enough to get the discussion started and perhaps we can see where the direction takes us and let you see if there's consensus.
Okay, so we'll start with questions from staff, I mean, from council. First off, does everybody want to deal with this tonight?
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be controversial.
Oh, I also wanted to add that Councilmember Andrews did ask staff to prepare a, a matrix of some sort that compares and contrasts the major deadlines of a November versus a March election. So that is before you and in the back for a public review.
Wow. Oh, Jimmy. What is it, what am I taking away from this?
Okay, so let's open with questions from the council.
Should I ask, that's just a straightforward, is one of these choices more expensive than the other? Are they more or less equally expensive?
I believe keeping, neither, neither is more expensive. That's part of what's entailed with moving to a statewide primary. That's part of what's entailed with moving to a statewide primary or general election. There are more participants in both of those ballots to spread the cost around. The most expensive thing to consider is keeping a November 2019 election since there will be very few participants in that election, just four other towns, I believe. And I, he doesn't know of anything else as of yet, but it will be a much smaller election. But your selection between the statewide primary, March versus November, is, it should be pretty equal.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, then we will open it up for the public. If anybody would like to speak or comment.
We have a pro, we have an elections pro.
As a matter of fact, I don't know where Todd is, but he got in touch with me and asked me to come to answer the questions for all of you, so.
What's your opinion, Phyllis?
What's my opinion? Forget the November 19, yeah, 2019. It's going to cost too much. You have to decide whether you want to do March or do November. And one of the things that you said, Rebecca, which I like and will save the town from having to keep on changing the ordinance, because I don't know if the primary's going to end up in March. It was there once before and moved. To say primary election or general election, you don't have to rewrite it. You're nodding, you know, you don't have to rewrite it every time. They have nothing better to do up in Sacramento than to change a date. What you want to look at and think about, and I just knocked somebody's glasses down, I think.
Pull the microphone down.
Excuse me?
Microphone.
One of the things you want to look at is how long the ballot is going to be, because Cordero Madera is going to be at the end. So you want to take a look at what is going to be on the ballot. And just to show you the propositions, so far, there are at least 10 that are going to be. See, all propositions have been moved to the November ballot.
No.
There's one exception, but I won't confuse you anymore than that. Two have already qualified. Eight of them are out there gathering signatures. One of the reasons people are rushing so much is the number of signatures needed is based upon a percentage of the votes in the gubernatorial election. This election we just had in November was the biggest turnout since, not only in California, but nationwide, since 1914, when women got to vote for the first time.
Wow.
Forty-nine point something percentage of eligible voters voted throughout the United States. In Marin, it was 82%.
Wow.
So the figure is going way up from, for a constitutional amendment, from five, about 570,000 up to 960,000 signatures. So you can see why everybody's rushing. You will have the president, because we don't have a U.S. senator, we'll have the House of Representatives, we'll have our state senator.
Phyllis, I thought, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? I'm sorry, and I appreciate, I thought the more stuff on the ballot, the cheaper it is for our town, though.
It's cheaper, but will you get, will anybody notice it?
I see.
There is voter fatigue. People get into the ballot, and I mean, there've been all sorts of demographic studies done. I've done a couple myself here in Marin. People, just because they go in to vote for president, in this case, that doesn't mean they're going to vote for the school board.
Gotcha.
You're also going to have three school boards on it, because all of the school boards are being moved to the even number of years in November. And in Cordero Madera, there are three, the elementary district, the high school district, and the college district. You can have the water district, I mean, all of this. The more, it is cheaper. But is Cordero Madera going to be noticed? Are people going to vote for Cordero Madera? You have to make that decision. Now, if you did, you would be extending another year, so the two who are up in that queue and Jim, I think, you will have five and a half year terms.
No, no, it's got to be, we can be extended one year max.
You now have a four and a half year term. You officially now have a four and a half year term, because you.
No, I have a four-year term if it's held in November, okay? If it's extended to March of 2020, then I will have a four and a half year term.
Four and a third.
And then if it's in November, it'll be five years.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so it'll be five years. So, you know, if you don't want to, I mean, you had problems last time, Sloan, about extending the terms.
What the?
Yes.
Concerns.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 you're right.
No, you made, as a matter of fact, I told you then, I was looking at the minutes, because when I was talking to Todd, I said, you know, I should have told Sloan, you could always resign and let somebody else fill out your term.
I am aware of this.
And I said, I should have told him that last time when I read the minutes from August of 2016, I sure did say it.
I appreciate that.
No, and I mean, there's no reason to, but it's up to you. There are some people who give so much time and then they have other plans. But you have to make that decision. And whatever decision you make, stay with it for a while, because you, now there's going to be the third change.
You mean the town, not me personally?
Yes.
Yes.
The town. So I don't know what your personal changes are that you're thinking about. But I think it's important to take a look at the number of propositions, the number of people on the ballot now.
Okay.
When you get to 2022, just so you know, you've got all the state offices, plus all the judicial, this is November now.
Yeah.
All the judicial, you'll have propositions, measures, and don't forget the local ones that come up. Some are countywide. There may be something at Cordero Madera. So think about, you're going to make a choice between, do you want the cheapest, or do you want the one that'll give you the most recognition? It's not going to be a tremendous difference in cost per vote, like if you did something in 2019.
Phyllis, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Phyllis, that was helpful.
Just a clarification, Phyllis, were you suggesting that already November 19 has a long list of propositions?
No.
No, 20.
No, 20, right, okay.
No, November 19 is going to have four cities, maybe, because they may change if we stay.
And did I hear you correct, correctly, when I heard you say that we should forget November 19 as an election date?
Yes.
Yeah, is there anything, any more color that you want to give to that?
The cost?
Okay.
It's prohibitive, and you're not going to get people out.
I agree with you.
No, they get voter fatigue.
I'm nervous extending my term.
I mean, you're either going to do March 2020.
Or November.
Or November.
2020.
And you've got to decide what you want.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Then I will bring it back for discussion, and I'm going to start down here.
I'm sorry to tell you, Mr. Mayor, I'm totally indifferent to this, so.
Mr. Mayor, one, one point of clarification or addition to what you heard in the public comment, I know the mention of being down ballot on a really popular ballot was mentioned. The further down you are, like I think the comment was, just because you vote for the presidential election doesn't mean you vote for a little Cordero Madera issues. At the same time, the counterpoint to that would be turnout. So turnout for a primary election is typically great, in some parts of California, much less than for a statewide election. And so the benefit of the turnout is you have more people actually coming to the ballot, even if we are perhaps down ballot in some cases. So, you know, that's something for you all to consider. I think in a, in a town of our size, it does make some sense, at least in my opinion, that the statewide general election has some benefits in terms of turnout.
Right. Elaine, David, just so you're aware of the history of this thing, we had a vigorous discussion on here where Michael Lapert took the position, and maybe some others, former council members anyway, that it was better to have an election on an off year when, like, nobody else is voting, because then we're not polluted with the Democrat, Republican titles and other things that happen in a larger gubernatorial or presidential election. But that got trumped by, I'm using that word as a verb, not, that got, yes, superseded by the state law that said, in order to rectify voter turnout, these things are going to be matched up. And that's where we are. And I don't care, Mr. Mayor, you want to.
We did have, I believe, I haven't looked at the actual numbers, but if you look at the actual number of votes cast for council members in the most recent election versus the last year.
It's still like the same, right?
It was like huge.
Oh, it was?
It was, it was exactly, it was exactly in the mid-60 percentages, which is what we predicted for the potential June year, June turnout.
Wait, no, this is.
Versus in the low 80s for a November election.
This is actually brand-new information, Rebecca. You're saying then, that, wait, so if we'd done it in an off year, it was like the same as if, as what it ended up?
No, 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 no.
It was way bigger.
It was, it was double.
Okay, okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't as high as a November, yeah. A November election could get, yes, 20, high 20s to low 30%.
So moving to the primary, increase the number of votes.
Low to mid-60s.
Huge, I mean, it's much greater than what it was in the past, right?
Yes.
Okay, that was the point I was trying to make.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or direction or comments, or, again, I'm going to go to you two guys, because you're the ones who are most affected by this directly, but anybody down here have a strong opinion?
I feel like I see pros and cons to both. I was, I was, I mean, I felt like when Phyllis said there's no tremendous cost difference, to me, that was kind of all I needed to hear to get us on a ballot with less other stuff crowding us out. But Peter makes a good point about turnout in a general election. Rebecca makes, I guess, something of a counterpoint now that the primary seemed to work pretty well for us in terms of getting turnout, oh, yes, am I interpreting that correctly?
Yes, we had, we had almost twice the turnout.
Well, we don't know about March. March is a different.
True, we don't know about March. Okay, so I guess I'm leaning towards the, going with the primary, but I see pros and cons to both.
We close. Sorry, we close. Public, okay, yeah, please, just keep it quick. Sorry.
No, it's late. And I came from another meeting to be.
We got, we got a closed session after this, so please.
Oh, okay. People, since 2016, people who have taken voting for granted no longer do. I think you can see that, and I, we're not going to waste time discussing why. But the turnout is incredible. On the March primary, we're probably going to have, and I certainly hope not, 18 to 20 Democrats. Remember, moving it up to March, we're going to have the whole group still involved. It's not like when we were in June. People are coming out to vote. People are getting concerned about what is happening. And there's going to be this type of thing, there are fights within the political parties themselves, so the primaries are going to become more important. So keep that in mind as you balance between the primary date and the general election.
Thank you, Phyllis.
Actually, Phyllis just made a point that I think I should mention, that when I was bending the Elections Department's ear to prepare the staff report, they did tell me that a primary ballot is a party ballot, so they would have to prepare lots of different Democrat, Republican, Independent, Green, every party gets its own ballot. So there's, it, it's insignificant to them, but it's more steps for them to make sure that they include the same number of things on everybody's ballots.
Okay.
Meaning more cost for us?
No.
Is it more expensive, Rebecca?
No, it's about the same estimated cost per voter. Actually, it's exactly, they use the same range for both. The only other thing to consider is maybe in the matrix. And even if you look at when candidates would need to be pulling papers and campaigning, the pros and cons are kind of the same for March versus November. In a March election, candidates will be pulling papers from mid-November to early December. And in a November election, candidates would be pulling papers in, from mid-July to early August. So you could have holidays on one hand versus summer vacation on the other. So there isn't, I mean, there are different cons, but there are cons to both.
Okay, so back to council, is there?
Mr. Mayor, are we all clear that we don't like November 19 as a date for our town's election?
I'm not sure what we're clear on at this point anymore. So if you have an opinion.
Okay, well, my opinion is that we should drop November 19 as an option, and then the question is between March and November 2020. I also am somewhat indifferent, because I think they're both going to be high turnout. I definitely believe that we should be putting our precious town up when it's the maximum possible turnout.
Okay, so you're saying you'd move it to March or November 2020?
Either one.
Okay.
If I may clarify for.
Yes, ma'am.
Through the mayor, I apologize. I just want to make clear that you, what staff is asking is really two separate things, and I just want to be clear. One is, as a general matter, do you want to go for March elections or November elections, putting aside the issue of 19 or 20? And we would encourage you to make that general direction first, and then address the issue of what you want to do about the fact that you do have a November 19 election. Do you want to keep it or not? And if you don't want to keep it, we would suggest that you then either move it to March or November of the following year, depending on what you did with the first question.
So the first question is March or November?
March or November in general.
Let's just start with that.
That's, I would suggest, to get through this fast.
Primary election or general election, right?
Correct.
The primary election right now is in March.
But the way that we would request that the amendment read is to, if you go with March, that you not say March, that we say statewide primaries, so that we're not in the position of coming back to you if March gets moved back to June.
Okay, so it's primary versus general election?
In the terms of council people, we'll be from shortly after the election, once the election is certified.
Once seated.
To the next election certified.
Once, yes, once seated until, well, until there, someone else is seated.
And to be clear, you're looking for direction again. We're not actually voting on this.
Love direction.
Okay.
I believe it would be appropriate for you three to pick and not Jim and me. I think there's an appearance of impropriety, is there not?
If you're concerned about, I would then say, I think March worked really well. I would be all for March. I was surprised at the turnout, how much better it was than when we were in an off year, and I thought March worked really well, and we're out of the national picture and the national spotlight, so I'd be in favor of March. I mean, primary, primary, excuse me, not March.
I concur.
But it will be national. I mean, it won't be the, the presidential election, but it will be a, a national scale election. But I agree with you on March.
Where are you?
I agree with you on March.
So primary.
Primary.
So primary, 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 and you two?
Yes.
Primary. Okay, so we got primary. Now, next question.
But which in our case is final.
Or there isn't one.
So the, the next question is, do you want to stay with November of 19, or do you want to change it to March of 20?
November of 19 or March of 20.
Essentially adding four, four months to your term, three months?
I would be fine with doing that, but I'm going to turn that over to you two guys, because you're, you're the ones who are most directly affected by it.
I think we should move the election, and then if we're not comfortable with it, we can resign or something.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I, to me, the money's the thing.
Right.
Why would we have an election?
But the question is, do we extend your terms? That's, that's what we're pointing in the right direction on.
Yes.
So you're saying, okay, go ahead and do it.
Yes.
I'm uncomfortable with extending my term, but.
You're extendable, okay. I'm comfortable with extending your term.
An advantage of the primary election timing is that it's an extension by only a third of a year.
Yeah, David's right.
Eli?
Yeah, yeah.
May I ask a quick clarification? Are you uncomfortable with the idea because you're voting on your own term, or do you, as a fundamental matter, don't want your term to be extended?
I'm.
Yes.
A definite maybe. I'm uncomfortable extending my personal term, okay? I would be more comfortable saying, we're going to hold the, you know, hold the election in November of this year, and the next election will be held four and a half years, five, whatever it is, whenever the primary date is. In effect, I would fulfill my term, and then whoever wins that election, we will have established what their term of office would be. Okay, does that make it tense?
No.
So you want to have a November election?
Yeah, but I'm not enough to argue with you about it.
So I guess I'm wondering if your discomfort is simply casting a vote because it affects your own personal term, you could choose not to vote out of feeling that you, of the appearance of a conflict.
Well, there's that, but also it's, when they, and this is not a perfect analogy or even a good analogy, but when they first passed the Constitution, shortly thereafter, they brought in 12 amendments, okay?
10.
10 of them were included, passed immediately, ratified, came into Bill of Rights. There were two more. One has never been passed, and the other one was passed, and it was a 27th Amendment that basically said. that basically says you cannot, a sitting member of Congress can't raise his pay, he can only raise it for whoever is there after the election. And that's, I'm tending to view extending my term as being comparable to giving myself a period.
First of all, I'm very comfortable being compared to our founding fathers.
Yeah, really? Wow.
I'm sorry.
Abstain.
So if you're not comfortable with casting a vote because it's your own, you can abstain. If your discomfort isn't about voting, but you just don't like the idea, you can vote against it.
And to be clear that we're not voting.
We're not voting tonight.
Right, we're just providing direction.
You are correct, but you could give it thumbs down or no thumb.
Okay. Thank you.
And staff would like direction upon with, I can't even construct a sentence right now. Staff would like direction about what to return with in terms of an ordinance that we would hope that you would then vote for, so we need all of the input that we can garner.
I think we're all going to primary.
I think we're going to primary and extending the term three months.
Okay.
Without him voting on it. He's abstaining. Does that make sense? Did I articulate that correctly?
If you could bring it back as two documents, one doing the March election, then the other extending the terms.
It's in the same ordinance, how would that work?
Or is that possible even?
I will sort through it with your clerk. We'll provide an ability for you to vote on one and not the other.
Okay, good.
You're slicing the bologna too thin.
So we are now moving on to 6.2 sanitary business items. There are town manager, juror, and council reports, town manager report. Then we'll go to council member reports. Are there any council member reports?
One-sentence report, which is that Elrod system was very clearly heard, one-third of the way up Christmas Tree Hill, very clearly heard on the 6th of December, that's all.
Good. Eli?
Was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting, they discussed their new budget. They just came and discussed it tonight, much better than I could recap, so we've got that. The school board had, the Larkspur Coeur d'Alene School District has installed their new trustees. CMSA has approved their sewer use ordinance, and the rest of that meeting was pretty much dedicated to looking at their financial reports, which are publicly available, and Larkspur leaving the CMSA, but that is going to come back to the each district, so there's nothing to report there at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Eli. Sloan?
Senator Maguire called an emergency meeting of the Legislative Committee at 5:30 PM on Friday evening.
Wow.
I know. He called it on, like, Wednesday, and then we had to be there two days later at 5:30 PM on a Friday, which I'm going to say about 10 times, because I'm still shocked I did it. A member from every single town showed up, including people from the county and two members of Coeur d'Alene. Jim came. And the purpose was that, in Sacramento, Mike wanted us to know that legislation is for sure coming down the pike, which will allow for density within striking distance of a transit hub. There's just no way to avoid that. It's going to happen. And there's a proposed bill, I think it's Senate Bill 55, which is already out there, maybe by Senator Weiner.
50.
5-0.
5-0, 50, which is pretty extreme, and as Mike calls it, a one-size-fits-all bill. And so in an effort to take an affirmative step, he is, along with somebody else, co-sponsoring an alternative bill, which will have some of the same effects, but will allow for a more tailored process, depending on the size of the municipality. And we were debating for a good hour and a half, a variety of constraints and conditions that would be tolerable from our perspective. The bigger-picture view of this is that there's a feeling that Marin has a real NIMBY problem, and that is attempting to avoid assuming any of the burden of providing housing for the state.
Really?
And that, and that, and that if we don't agree to something, it is going to be forced on us. So there was a strong pushback from every town there, including us, about whether we have to agree to anything, but I think as a consensus, we all sort of accept the idea that Mike is doing the best he can for us, but that something somewhat unpleasant tasting is going to happen in the, this coming year. And he didn't want us, the reason he called the emergency meeting is that he was going to put this thing out, he was going to publish it, I think first or second week in January, maybe, and he didn't want us to hear about it from anybody other than him. It was frankly kind of an honorable thing to do, but I don't really know what he expects. I don't have a copy of it yet, so I can't give you all the specifics. I tried to take notes, it was a little unclear. The concept was, for a town our size, duplexes would be allowed by, what's it called? By right.
In residential neighborhoods.
Within a half-mile of a transit hub.
No, no, it was on vacant parcels.
On vacant parcels, yeah. Well, some of that's a little unclear about what the.
That will go away, probably.
On a larger municipality, it'd be a triplex, and then bigger still, it would be, and so on and so forth. But the concept was, could we tailor it to recognize sort of legacy streets and fire areas? Could we tailor it to, in other words, there were, what the members of the committee did was debate for about an hour and a half, what are exceptions and conditions that could be inserted, which the rest of the state wouldn't think, we're just trying to protect ourselves, but that are legitimate differences. And then we'll get a revised version of Mike's bill in the next few weeks. As soon as I get it, I'll maybe give it to Rebecca or somebody, including the staff report. But again, this is just pending. It's a fascinating exercise, but I believe the end result is not going to be one we're going to be happy with, because the consequence is we will not be entitled to exercise any real planning review. So Peter and Phyllis' Excellent Planning Commission will not be able to exercise design review over structures within striking distance of these transit places. That's the sort of thing which I think our people are going to freak out about, as they should, because I think we should, as a town, be entitled to maintain some of our local character. Nevertheless, that's what's coming.
And the questionable thing is, how do you define transit? Is it sort of fixed facilities like rail or ferry terminals? Or is it a bus route that can appear this week, the schedule runs for six months, then they have revenue issues, and they cut back? But we're living with the building that resulted from it, and that wasn't clear.
So anyway, it was kind of interesting, but that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Jim? That's it. I don't have anything to report, so we.
Executive session?
Have a draft agenda, but we actually don't have the draft agenda, so there's nothing to review and approve on that. So then we're going to adjourn to closed session.
Can I ask a question about, can I ask a question about that one page?